We had a teaching and learning highlight scheduled, but due to an illness, we're going to delay that to a future meeting. We will have an enrichment and challenge update, preliminary discussion of the proposed fiscal year sixteen budget, then a fiscal year fifteen budget update. We then want to begin a preliminary discussion around the calendar for next school year. We will have a second reading and hopeful vote of several policy updates. We'll discuss and potentially accept a donation, and then we'll entertain other matters. And just before we begin, we had the sadness of the loss of one of our employees since our last meeting. A longtime bus driver, I think thirty-plus years.
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five years, Betty Moore's Head. So if we could just have a moment of silence in honor of Betty, please. Thank you. So thirty-five years.
Thirty-five years, and Betty was one of those people that showed up every day, drove her bus, loved the kids, made them feel at ease. I'm sure most of us have had Betty drive our kids at one time or another, and she was the epitome of the caring, warm, wonderful local bus driver. So she'll be sorely missed to her services who are today, and they were quite touching in terms of how much she's meant to this community, really. So it was a surprise and a shock, and you know, it'll be, it'll be difficult to go on without Betty. She's just one of those people that's always there, and she was the one that drove the bus with the shamrock in the front. Everybody would recognize it, and a great lady, meant a lot to our community.
I'm sure many people in our community knew Betty much better than I did, but I actually did have a chance to meet her a little bit. They stored a sign for us for the spring fling at the Taylor School, and I got to know Betty when I used to go and get the sign every year. I think she drove Minibus Four, if I'm not mistaken, and most recently.
Yes.
And wouldn't you know, but I was coming down South Street today and passed Minibus Four, and I thought, "Betty, rest in peace." But I remember you'd pass that bus, I don't know, being around town, you'd pass that bus sometimes multiple times a day, and she was doing a great job.
Well, fittingly, Minibus, her Minibus with the shamrock was the part, part of the funeral procession today.
Oh, great!
Really?
And her family wrote on it, actually.
Oh.
Oh, how, how, perfect.
Yeah, it was really sweet. Just, just unbelievably great person and a great member of the South Foxborough community. Grew up in Foxborough, so pretty much everyone knows the Moore Sheds in some way, shape, or form. So she'll be sorely missed, but definitely set the standard. Nothing, she was unflappable. As all good bus drivers are.
Not rain nor sleet, nor...
Or child, or student. Great person.
Betty, rest in peace.
Yes.
Well, for the first time in my six years, we don't have a possible visitor because we don't have a possible soul in the room tonight besides those at the table, so we'll move quickly beyond that.
Just one little anecdote about Betty. She, I do not remember, but it was one of Vinnie Igoe's favorite stories about her. Something was going on in the school committee, and it upset her so that she raced out of her home and came roaring in as a visitor. And when she looked down, she still had her fuzzy slippers on. But she came and let everybody know how she felt on the subject.
That's cute. Okay, we have the minutes from regular meeting December first to take a look at. Any comments about those minutes?
No, I, I make a motion that we accept them.
I'll second that motion. I had no changes.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Five-zero, thank you very much. Okay. Enrichment and challenge update, Ms. Penelope.
Yes, so you have in your packet, as part of our school district goals, as you know, we, we are, we have kept in our joint goals, the committee and the administration share, the desire to continuously expand our opportunities for enrichment and challenge, both during the school day and beyond the school day. So what I've provided for you this month, because our update was to be in December, is what's been happening this year that's new and that is in addition to anything that's been added over the past year. So if you remember, at the end of the school year this past year, that was one of my goals, two-year goals, to expand those programs, which we did, and so at, in June, you got the update of everything that had happened to that point. And so this literally is everything that's happened in the last four months, which, which expands on our enrichment and challenge. So just to give the public at home about new programs and opportunities that have been added for the current school year, new enrichment and challenge programs for this year. Is that the sound system?
Yeah, you're okay.
Okay.
I think Frank's going with it.
Hi, thanks Frank. Fix me. It's hard to hear myself once, never mind twice. Okay, so at Foxborough High School, as you know, we have the new engineering course, and we have two sections going of that. That's been a great addition to our high school, so we have two different classes running on that. The high school advocate program, which we've talked about recently, and one of these days it will be a teaching and learning highlight to have some of the students come and talk about that. That provided training and technology leadership for twenty-one students in grades nine through twelve. It's one of our new innovative programs, I'll say. We have a new AP course, Studio Art. We've expanded senior project, as you remember, last year, which we were calling the inaugural year. Twenty-one students participated, and we, this year, have seventy students who have submitted proposals for the senior project for this coming spring. So assuming they all go forward, or most go forward, that's, that's tripling the number of students that we had from year one to two, so that's great.
I think that's a real testament, too, to the fact that students really had a positive experience from last year and have communicated that, I'm sure, to the underclassmen, and so they are, they are now interested as well.
And I think what's great is they can certainly share what the challenges were, as well as the benefits, and then students make an informed decision about that, because it, I mean, students are taking APs, they'll have to come to school for some of those things. So they have to juggle their job, their internship, their externship, whatever you want to call it. But we do have a lot of students interested.
That's exciting.
Yes, so that's great. At the Ahern Middle School, in the first four months of this school year, or less than four months, we have two new grade-eight electives. If you have had students in eighth grade, you know, that's when they start experiencing this idea of electives. So they have a new grade-eight computer science elective, which will take place in the second semester. And there's a new grade-eight music technology elective, using the new Mixcraft music software and in the music technology lab that we, through capital improvement, we upgraded last, about a year ago. We've had an expansion of after-school clubs and activities to meet students' needs and interests. And you can see that that, along with the engineering course and high school advocates, have an asterisk after it, which means that the continuation of those three expansion opportunities are a budget, impact on the school budget, and you'll see those things accounted for in the budget that will be presented later this evening. At the Borough Elementary School, the after-school enrichment program that they run in partnership with the Borough School PTO, they are expanding that, which they did last year, and they're going to expand it even more, and they're really looking for more, things that are more academically oriented, rather than, you know, other more traditional things you might have thought of when they started thirty-something years ago. The Igoe Elementary School, Mr. Stanton has, he started last year a principal's leadership academy, because we're very interested in this idea of student leadership, so you can see that in the high school advocate. You can see that in the music program. You see that a lot of areas that, for students to take on a leadership role is really a great opportunity for them to expand their skills and gain in confidence in terms of how they, they develop as young men and women. So Mr. Stanton started Leadership Academy, which actually is developed based on, everyone knows Stephen Covey's The Seven Habits of Highly Effective People. So he's done a lot of work in the last several years on the seven habits of highly effective students, the seven habits of happy kids. So it really takes all of those pillars of, of how to be an effective person in the world and brings it down to the student level. So the program actually is built on Stephen Covey's model of highly effective people and brings it down to that level. So he's expanding that, he's continuing his model last year. So any of the students who are in it in three and four, he's going to do a leadership two-point-oh so that they get to the next level, and he's going to bring in another core of grade-three and-four students who would like to participate. And the second pillar for the students in the two-point-oh, if you will, is going to focus on digital citizens, digital citizenship and the appropriate use of technology and social media. So he's actually using the students to model for other students how to be responsible citizens. So that's their expansion. The Taylor Elementary School this year will be developing a program very similar to BEEP at the Borough School in partnership with their school council and their PTO, so that rather than continuing to add individual clubs and activities, they're going to really roll out a whole after-school enrichment program similar to BEEP, and they're calling it Blast. So that's our update in the first three and a half months of this school year.
That's quite a list.
Katie?
This is so impressive. I, I just, I mean, what, what you've done and accomplished in the first several months. And I love this whole idea of each of the elementary schools kind of taking this concept and kind of making it their own, whatever, however they're trying to kind of meet the needs of the students. The Igoe Elementary School, again, it's, what's, what's so interesting to me is that at each level, we are really focusing on the same kind of core ideas, like this leadership piece. And again, it's not just going to be something new that students in the middle school will come to learn about. It'll be something that's already being bred, you know, to them at the elementary level. And I think that's really how you have that sustainability throughout a child's, you know, schooling. You know, that they're, they're transferring these things, and as they're getting older, and they're adapting, and they're maturing. So I just, I think that's so exciting. I'd love to hear more about that.
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing.
Well, I have already, as you know, you can imagine, I've asked him to be a teaching and learning highlight. He would rather the program get a little bit more underway, and then they will come with some of his student leaders. But I, I think that's a great point that you made that I hadn't thought of, but it's, it really is, if you're, if you're sending kids onto the Ahern School with already the idea that they can and do have the skills, they can be leaders, and they already have the skills within them, and that's really what it's about. The book that he wrote about, Stephen Covey's called The Leader in Me, and so it really is about developing that, and if we can send kids on to the middle school with that mindset, how great will that be?
I think, too, coupled with all of the developmental challenges socially as well in the middle school, I think that this will be really interesting to watch over time, how this impacts our students and our surveys, maybe even, because they're going to be entering that, you know, that, that middle school time where there's, you know, they face a lot of challenges, and if they have some of these, you know, core leadership skills, you know, it would just be interesting to see how that kind of gets manifested down the road. So I, I just, I think that's really exciting, so I'll look forward to hearing.
Steve?
What Katie just said, yes. In an effort, in an effort to help and not affect what you've already done and are doing, just, I'm just asking. It, it's great to see the senior project treble or more. Does the faculty or the student body need more resources, materials, tools, et cetera, to accommodate a tsunami of an increase in, in participation, right? I mean, because when they pitched it last year, we, we were impressed about how, how involved it is, the senior project, from its conception to the final execution, right? And so there's a lot of moving parts, and do, do we need more?
Not at this time. I would say the nice thing about the expansion of the senior project is, if you remember, coincided with our taking on the school-to-career coordinator, Ms. Pillsbury, full-time as a member of our staff. So that really has helped. I'm sure it will take a lot more work to coordinate this many students than it would twenty-one. But we'll see. It's early. They just submitted the proposal, so we have to wait and see how many students actually enter it finally. But I don't really think so, because she's, she's, as you know, very good at finding placements for kids, but kids actually are responsible for finding their own placement as well. So they can go to there for resources, but a lot of our students, I have to give them credit, they already know what kind of thing they want to do, and they can chase after their own opportunities as well. So it becomes a group effort.
And, and on that same line of thought, if I may, thank you. Mike Stanton's piece with the social media responsibility training, which I'm sure is already, you know, built, or at least moving along. It, it's funny, I just talked to three parents in the last week who were asking me as a school committee member if we had any similar things for parents. In other words, like, one of the things I want outside of the, the Apple product line is to be able to track my children's texts, and...
Well, I personally will not be talking about your children's texts.
Well, I, I, you know, I use me as an example because I don't mind, but there's a lot of things that parents need to know as well about this social responsibility, and I'm not preaching. I'm just wondering if, if down the road, we would, might consider implementing something for the parents as well that works in concert with what the students are learning.
What an excellent segue. I'm going to turn it right over to Dr. Burdles, and I'm just going to hold up the...
Hello, Dr. Burdles.
I'm just going to hold up the, the, what do you call this, the?
brochure pamphlet.
It's a parent brochure.
Yeah, the, the...
The printed-out PDF?
I'm just going to hold up the evidence. I know there's another word I was searching for, but it's not going to come, so. Exhibit A. Yes, that's exactly what I mean. Yes.
We talked at the last meeting, and one of the things that Julia was going to talk about this evening was the rollout of the email and the lessons and things that we're doing to prepare kids, really the digital citizenship and that responsibility, because it is a great responsibility. So these brochures that we were able to obtain from the Federal Trade Commission for free are brochures that are being used in warrior huddles for high school kids. I brought one for each of you, too. And they're also going home with every child in seventh grade through twelfth. Not with fifth and sixth graders, although we're talking about a lot of the content that's in here, but we just felt that it was more developmentally appropriate for seventh and eighth. So this information, and then also to your point, when we had Katie Greer come for the parent evening last year, she spoke a lot of those things and a lot of different pieces that were there. And we do have our parent technology night scheduled for March the tenth. National Digital Learning Day is later this year. It's actually around the fifteenth, I think, of March. But we're going to have our parent technology night on Tuesday, March the tenth. And we'll be talking about digital citizenship and those things during that evening as well.
Thank you.
So I'll just pass these each way, so you can have an extra copy in addition to the one that maybe your children's bringing home.
You did a nice piece about the I advocate in the paper, I think I saw it. And maybe that's something also that can go out to the newspaper or something like that.
Just pass one down to the audience member over there.
Yes, go save the date.
Thanks.
They're going to be getting it at high school. If you could just pass one right back to there.
Thanks.
To Frank.
Bruce.
You're welcome. Other comments on enrichment and challenge update?
I'm just very impressed with everything that is going on, and I think it's exciting. I love that we're getting a computer science elective in the eighth grade. I think it'll be very popular with the kids. I know it's a lottery system, so I, I'm sure it'll be a lot of kids' first choice. And the music technology as well, but, and I, I second everything Katie said as well about the Leadership Academy. I hope that at the end of the year, maybe they can come and give us an overview.
They're going to come in maybe, maybe about three-quarters of the year, and we're giving them some time so they actually have some experiences this year and can talk about it. I think, I think one of the things that, I don't know what you said that triggered the thought, but one of the things that, it pleased me when I was writing that up, is we've had this as a goal for a few years, enrichment and challenge. I took it on as a personal goal, but what I really like is when you realize, when you have that moment where you realize that when you focused on something, when we collectively have focused on something. A few years ago, it was wellness, it's this, it's some other things. And then you see that it's become part of just how we do business, that no one has to say to anyone, "There'd be any of the, remember, we're trying to expand enrichment and challenge. I just have to call for the updates," and everybody has one. I think that when you realize that it's become part of the, how, just the regular way we do business to constantly seek more expansion, that, that's what makes me happy. I'm sorry, I'm calling again.
I just wanted to speak on, I just love the music technology program. I'm a very big fan of music, obviously. I think I took almost every course offered at the middle school when they first started offering electives for music. Ms. Pink's behind the music, and her intro piano and guitar. And like, here at the high school, taking those extra music classes, like music theory this year and jazz choir. I just love that they're starting that at a younger age, kind of like composing. It's such a personal thing that I enjoy, and I just love that it's being offered to younger kids there at the middle school. I just think that's a great expansion.
She's the one offering it, Ms. Pink.
Ms. Pink, yeah.
Of course.
She's a great one.
So it's going to be great, yes.
Great person to offer that.
That's another example, that early, if we can give kids a little bit earlier experience with some of these things.
And I, like, also, I've heard so much great feedback, like, from, like, students and all, like, my friends who've done the senior project and who are AP art now, they absolutely love it. The people who did the, the senior project last year loved it. I've never heard anything negative from it at all. And then AP art, they're absolutely, like, so, like, grateful for and everything, especially those people who are all for art. Like, it just, like, those two are things that are so great for the school. It was a good thing, great, yeah.
You know, I, I was going to ask you guys for feedback on this one, because I had a feeling you'd have some. Didn't even have to do that. chimed right in, so that was great.
I think, I think that, you know, to Melissa's point, the art, the art course, for students who really, that is their niche area and their talent and their brilliance, the AP studio art really gets them to that next level so that they can really go on and with a stronger portfolio, and it just gives them so many things to, to do. So I think that's a great example about, you know, challenging, challenging oneself could be in any area. It could be in an area, you, you just feel like you need to be more challenged, or you're not as good at it, and you want to challenge yourself. But it could be in, in the area that you really are, have an exceptional talent, and what would it take to just get you to that next level? So very happy with that.
Anything else? I just remembered Debbie sitting here five, six years ago when other members at the table were really pressing on this as a topic of focus, and I like what you said. Not only do we have a list of new programs just this year, but it's really becoming systemic.
Yes.
So that's, that is a great accomplishment, not just this year, but over the years, I think. And the, the student feedback is the icing on the cake, so. It's, it's great that we offer so many expanded opportunities for our kids, and we appreciate that. So thank you to you and Amy and the entire staff for putting focus on that.
I just want to say as well, I agree with you. I think, as you were talking about what's different, it's the culture. And I think it really is led by the leadership of you, Amy, and Bill in the sense of really trying to support and expand what students are looking for and, and looking outside of what the maybe typical educational programming is. I mean, obviously, all these things are part of it, but, but the expansion of it, like you said, for those students. And we had, we, we know that, for instance, art, we had, we've had so many students in the past, right, who have won awards. And even those who, that have not, we know that that program is so expansive right now. So this AP class is giving students another opportunity to really be challenged, to really have a place where they can feel that what is of value to them is being recognized by the district they live in, because we are providing these kinds of opportunities for them. So we talk a lot about it, but I just thought it was important to recognize and remind people, because I don't think a lot of districts have this, and I just think, you know, every, every meeting, we just hear more and more about the, how we're doing this here, so I just wanted to kind of give kudos to the leaders as well.
I just want to add that we also, most importantly, I think, have teachers who are willing to take on almost anything. If kids are interested, we have teachers who'll say, "I'll do that," or "I have a particular talent I'd like to share." So that's where we often see our staff step forward and say, "I'll do that club, or I'll do that activity. I'll work with those kids on that." So I think that's part of the culture that preceded all of this. I think an awareness that we want to expand is there, but, you know, we have great people who are just willing to step forward beyond the school day and say, "I'd be happy to do that," or, you know, "The kids really want it, so they'll make it happen." So I, I love that about our people.
We are offering so much more than you have to.
Yes.
And for a small, little school system like ours, for our children to have all these opportunities is fantastic. It really is. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Yugna, budget?
Well, well, well. So while Bill's getting the PowerPoint ready, just give you a little bit of background. As everyone knows, this is our time where we present the preliminary budget. And I'm going to say especially this year, I want to emphasize the word preliminary a couple of times. There are a couple of things we're still watching, and so as you know, it's early, it's in December, but this is when our, the first iteration of our budget is presented publicly. There are a couple of things that you'll see in here that you might have looked and been a little bit surprised by and some other things that you expected to see. I think our goal tonight is to explain where we are with the budget, what are some of the changes that you see, and why, and the rationale behind that. But there is, you know, an area or two that we are watching that we'll explain as, as we get along. So even though every year, this is the preliminary time, there, there, this truly might be preliminary, and we might come back in January with some more data or some more thoughts about some of this, because this is based on everything we know as of what we know today.
Okay.
So we're starting with, I want to put on my glasses. That way, instead of looking at my notebook, I'll just look up there to see what you're looking at. So the school budget timeline, as you know, we work very carefully with the town. So this is also the, if you're new to watching, this is the budget presentation. I'll do the intro, and then Bill takes over with all the fine numbers and the explanation and all the detail that he has much more interest in. So here we go. So the budget timeline, as you know, we start meeting in usually late October with the town side folks, with town manager, finance director, and they put out the timetable for the development of the budget for the next fiscal year. So we had our leadership team meeting, this time very, just past October, just in early November. As you know, the committee had the joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen to look at the revenue forecast so that we could see what was coming up in terms of incoming revenues for the town and how that looked like it was all going to balance out. Our budget request went to the town finance director, and we have a public presentation at the school committee meeting. That's actually the fifteenth, twelve, fifteen, fourteen, so that should be the fifteenth. At tonight's school committee meeting. So as you know, you have one more meeting in early January where we'll still be talking budget. We would like to come back in, at the January meeting with any questions or further information that you might need after tonight, so I'm going to say that at the end, but I want to make sure I say that at the beginning, too, so you can be thinking about what your questions might be. And then you vote the bottom line of the budget at the end of January. We have a member of the advisory committee here, Mr. Thomas, and we have two, we have three liaisons this year. So we'll be meeting with our budget liaisons from advisory committee by the end of this week. We'll be going over our detailed budget with them, answering their questions, which could bring up something we'd like to share with you in January as well. And then, and you will tell meeting is when the budget is approved. So our budget message, part of it hasn't changed in that, in that the overall intent of the budget is to maintain the same level of educational services, which we think are pretty high for students, as we just discussed, while working within a very reasonable level with the municipal funding and the town budget framework. We've been pretty successful for many years now, working within the budget framework of the town, and we have great relationships with them, so ongoing communication with them really truly helps. And that's very consistent with how we've historically approached the budget here in town. Also, thank you to the community has always supported the, the schools, the public schools, so I want to make sure I don't forget to say that. As you know, our strategic plan is new this year. Excuse me, so we're in year one of a new three-year strategic plan. So these overall overarching broad objectives have changed from the budget message from past years. So as you can see, that the budget priorities really reflect those four broad objectives that are current, and that's to continue to offer dynamic learning experiences within a rigorous curriculum that promote critical thinking, creativity, communication, and collaboration, and that foster high levels of achievement for all students by preparing them to be responsible global citizens. The second overarching objective is to continue to strengthen school culture, ensuring that students, staff, and parents, and all stakeholders feel valued, safe, and have a voice. The third objective is to enhance district technological capabilities and infrastructure to provide an increasingly safe and supportive physical and academic school environment. And the last is to maintain strong support for public education within our community. So the, the rest is, this budget intends to preserve our very reasonable class sizes, which the community holds at high value, preserve our current programs and services to students. And I think you could see from the last item on enrichment and challenge that a lot of the program expansion that we do really doesn't cost a lot of money. It's about will and, and effort. And also, we always want to move our academic and strategic initiatives forward. So you'll see a couple of things in there that will help us to do that as we, I'm going to go back to that point when we get to the specific changes. As everyone knows, technology costs more and more, and is more and more focused of what we do as a supportive environment for the learning, not as a means in and of itself. And it also enables us to meet all state and federal guidelines across all aspects of public education. And as usual, it doesn't address all the needs of the district. It really, this budget addresses the, the highest priority needs as we've identified them this fall. So what's new, and you're going to see the specifics in the budget when Bill goes over it. So when it comes to meeting the current needs and the shifts of needs in the district, so what you will see is new, is we would like to increase one full-time equivalent position, technology integration specialist. I think you know, right now, we have two that we share among all five schools. So one of our tech integration specialists, Ms. Reed, travels across all three elementary schools, and we're going to keep that the same. Ms. Greenstein shares the Ahern... Ms. Greenstein shares the Ahearn and the high school. Um, she was the teaching learning highlight tonight that will come back in January. She's amazingly talented, but she also serves schools with about sixteen hundred kids and a couple hundred staff members in it. So, what we would like to accomplish in the FY sixteen budget is to add another secondary tech integration specialist, so that we have one full-time at the high school, one full-time at the middle school, where most of the tech integration is quite complicated and complex. And then we will leave the shared elementary tech integration specialist. So that's our biggest priority need. In terms of the elementary math specialist, that, this was a position that you, as a committee, first supported, I'm going to say about eight or nine years ago, because it preceded, when I came back in two thousand and seven, we had one in place, I know at the time when I came back. So, right now, we have two point five elementary math specialists spread across three schools. And the point five is only this year, because we got a, an increase in our Title I funding that we actually didn't expect. So we added the point five math specialist. Our goal is to have three, so we have just one elementary math specialist at each of the three schools, so that we, we reduce the travel. And that person, as you know, that position was created to offer enrichment and challenge to students who can be challenged in math. And also to provide intervention for students who need some more work on the math standards. So, if the, if the grant stays as is, which we really won't know until July, then we would, our goal here is to have one at each school. If for some reason that grant goes back down, which there's no way to predict at the point, then we would able, be able to preserve what we have currently, which is two point five. So this could be a preservation, or it could be to get us toward the goal of having three. Won't be able to know that. We spent a lot of time in the last month with all departments and all levels, um, Bill and I, looking at class sizes, looking at student teacher ratios. And trying to make sure that we have allocated staff where the greatest needs are. And so that we can repurpose or shift our human resources around to meet where we are now. So, one of the things that came out of this when we met with Mr. Massey is they, is he and Mrs. Abrams had a lot of data that they each presented to us separately and in different ways that showed the student and teacher ratios in the music program at the middle school can be as high as eighty-eight to one. So, there were some periods in the day that there's more coverage for that and there were other periods that there really isn't. So, it could range anywhere from a, what you would think of as a reasonable class size, all the way up to some of our bigger performance groups are, are quite large. So, except for, um, most, let's see, hmm, hmm, hmm. Most of the day at the Ahearn, there's only one teacher that's there all day long and then we have three or four others that do come in for part of the day. So what this would really accomplish is it would, um, continue to grow the program in the middle school. And the data that we collected, um, even though, you know, our population's trickling a little bit, but our music participation is increasing at the middle school. So kids are staying in the band groups a little bit longer than they might have before. And so that has really expanded the student teacher ratios to a point where we decided this year we should really address that. So we're suggesting the addition of a point four music teacher for the Ahearn, Ahearn Middle School, and that really would be plenty. And in my last conversation with Steve, he said if we could do that, that would actually, we have one teacher who travels across three levels, high school, middle and elementary. That would also correct that problem and reduce the, the traveling. But more importantly, it would really outfit the Ahearn with the number of FTEs that are needed to meet the capacity of students enrolled in the music program at that school. And according to Mr. Massey, that's, that's really all that the music program needs and it, there, that would really put us in fine stead. So in looking at the class sizes and the opportunities we have to where our enrollment is trickling a little bit, as you know, and looking at all of the department's class sizes, we went through this with a fine-tooth comb with, with everyone. Um, we really do think that we can reduce an English position and a math position at Foxborough High School. And I will say that the reasons behind that are a couple of things. Um, one, we used to, in the early days of MCAS and then going forward, we were offering a lot of sections of MCAS prep, MCAS review. And we don't, because of the nature of the, the, um, kids are doing better in the general curriculum, we've changed some of the standards. So, we're not offering as many of those classes as we did before, so I would say it's, it's good. Uh, so a combination of that and the trickle-down enrollment, we believe that this is the time that we could do that. So, um, we looked at all those. The math position, I would say, is, is going to require a little bit more careful scrutiny in the next couple, couple of weeks. We've had ongoing conversations about that. We do think that we could reduce a position at Foxborough High School due to increasing enrollments, because the high schools shrink it just a little bit, um, every year. And looking at across all other departments, we kind of feel the same way about English, but not as strongly. I'd say, you know, the English department seems like a pretty confident move. Uh, the math department, we're going to have to look and we may not know exactly, um, until a little bit even longer than that, but we have an early budget season. So at this point, we have met with those departments, I have met with those two departments, so this isn't a surprise to anybody. We've looked at the numbers. There are also some moves that can be made within the department that doesn't mean, so I don't want anyone listening to think the class size is going to be huge in the English and math department. They're not going to really go up, go up dramatically at all, because there are some things that we can either not offer as many sections of, we don't need them anymore. And so I don't want anyone to interpret this as this suddenly going to be a huge expansion of the class sizes in English or math, because that isn't what we believe to be true. But I would say that with confidence in the English department, I would say with a lot of confidence for math, but that's going to require our careful attention in the next couple of weeks. And we're all on board, it's very transparent, so we'll see how that plays out. But there are, there are some unknowns when it comes to, uh, things, electives that students pick when they do their course selection that could surprise us. So kids do their course selection in February and that's when we know which sections are going to be offered and which aren't, based on what the kids sign up for. So there could still be a surprise in there when it comes to where kids are, but there's no way for us to guess that right now. So we may have to adjust and we'll figure out a way to adjust at that time, but we won't know that until the end of February. And that's true of every year, that's no different every year. And obviously, we have some targeted expense adjustments and Bill will speak a little bit more than that, it's his language. So obviously, we always have incremental costs, uh, what's driving that? We have increased costs of tuition reimbursement and that's, that's a good thing. If our teachers are taking more and more courses to find, you know, fine tune their craft, that's a good thing, that's a contracted, uh, in the, it's a contractual obligation. Bill will speak to you more about recurring costs for software, network licensing and bandwidth requirements, has been a lot of, uh, upgrading in that and that also will cost more. We're offering mu- many more.
I mean, we're going to have to plan that every year.
That's true. So we have a little bit more expense in student programs and leadership opportunities at the middle and high school. I'll let Bill talk about the telephone costs, he gets that. We, obviously, all the staple items, printer toner, if you're buying anything for your house, you know, all that costs more. We do transport homeless students, it's a federal mandate and that costs, that's, costs more and more each year. And we do have homeless students that either became homeless in Foxborough or are now living in Foxborough. In either case, if they are declared homeless, each district, whether it's the, the home district or the district they are now living in, there's a fifty-fifty cost share for transportation under the federal law. And then we have some aging equipment in the music department that needs replacing, um, that we typically don't put in every year, but every once in a while, kind of like the curriculum cycle or the computer replacement cycle. Every seven or eight years or so, you need to replace some aging equipment in the music department and this is the year for that. So what are some examples of needs we might have that we're not requesting at this time? And once again, and we've done this for the last couple of years, increase to the textbook adoption line. So we're really, um, as Bill would have said, we're really putting the money in the budget where it really is going to be spent. And we're not going to put it where we don't think it's going to be spent. So there's a lot more online resources now, we're not buying as many textbooks. So, we've kept that line item pretty flat for the last four years or so and we intend to do the same. We will need additional computers or mobile devices for, to address the future park, the federal national assessments. And those will be administered online in the middle and high school in the spring. And we decided to keep the paper version for the elementary students. Couple of reasons, we don't have full labs at all three schools, we don't at Borough. But more importantly, the younger kids haven't really had a lot of practice with taking an online assessment. So we'd like to get a look at the test and keep it in the format that they feel more comfortable in, because they're pretty young. We need more interactive whiteboards for the middle and high school. I real, you know, if we had started when everyone else started, we'd probably be fully operational by now. But ten years ago, you weren't acquiring interactive whiteboards at all, it wasn't one in the entire district, seven years ago, actually. So, we have eighty-two percent of the classrooms at the Ahearn have them, or they have a short throw projector, either or. And we're okay with either or, uh, but we would like to finish outfitting the middle school. And we only have fifty-eight percent of the classrooms similarly outfitted at the high school. And now we're at the point where some of the originals are breaking down and need to be replaced, so it's all starting to catch up with us a little bit. We are not addressing in this budget the possibility of needing another social, social worker, either district-wide or particularly at the high school. We've talked a lot at this table about mental health needs, social emotional needs increase every year, and that's true everywhere in the country. Would say that we're no different from all of the school districts. So we're in the process of discussing whether we need another person to address those needs. You may see that come up next year, but we're really using this year to collect data on how those services are delivered and what the caseload is. And we just don't have the data yet, so I, I don't recommend anything that we don't have any data for to show what the need is. So, we've got a great person this year, she's very talented, but she's also new to us. So, we will, we will see at the end of this year if we still feel the same and you probably will see that.
Debbie, I just have a question, how many social workers do we have right now at the high school?
Uh, one at each level, basically.
One at the high school.
We have one at the high school, one at the middle school and one that does both, one, one that does a couple of different jobs at the elementary school. One being of the social work function, but not a full-time person.
And so we're looking to, uh, potentially add this at the high school?
Possibly next year.
Right.
So, sometimes what we put on this list are things that have been discussed, but that didn't make it to the top of our priority list. And, you know, we've never gone forward with a budget that puts everything on the list that we've ever, it's not a, it's not necessarily a, a everything we want type budget. We don't, we haven't ever done that. So this is something we spent a lot of time discussing, but without having the data, we're not ready to put it forward, but it does seem, on the ground, it does seem like a need.
I'm just struck by the example that you just used, uh, about, um, whiteboards. I'm not equating the two, obviously, but I'm, 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 you know, I'm just recognizing that technology was something that we took our time to start to develop. And I just want to make sure that social services is not going to be something that we're going to take our time, because these are going to be, you know, this will be time lost for students. Right. So we just want to make sure, so if you find, um, you know, that we need to put, uh, more direction of that, on that, that I just want to make sure, I know you'll come back to the committee.
Yes.
Um, because I know there are so many different needs.
You're right, that's an area that could change within the span of a month, depending on what's happening.
Right, and I know you're trying to be, um, you know, juggle all of these needs, uh, obviously, to be fiscally responsible. But, again, just, um, that's just a concern, so.
It's definitely a need, I just don't know if it rose to that level yet and we don't collect the data that we should put it forward.
Okay, thank you.
As we all know, we don't have free universal full-day kindergarten. However, um, we have very little market in Foxborough for the half-day program. So I just want to remind the committee that, um, we have only one half-day section that we're running this year, it's at the IGO. So we're basically bussing families, students of families from all three of the elementary schools into one half-day class at the IGO. So pretty much, we're getting to the point where the market isn't there for half-day. Uh, pretty much everyone in town wants a full-day program, which is tuition-based. There is a, um, there is a sliding scale for family income. But at some point, I think, uh, my, my goal, and I'm going to bring this up right now before we get to the detail. I thought maybe the timing was right, at our next meeting in January, in a neutral way, to come to this table and explain what the cost would be for free universal kindergarten with no tuition. Not to make a recommendation, but just to make a little bit more public, what, how much we take in tuition, what would it really take if we went free universal kindergarten in Foxborough? We would still be able to get the state grant, um, but there are some other factors.
We would be.
Oh, yes, yes, it doesn't, whether you charge tuition or not, doesn't preclude you from getting the grant. The grant is to encourage districts to offer full-day kindergarten. So, that grant would still be in place, but the cost of it is really what we take in tuition, a few other factors. So, I think it's a good idea, Bill and I have been talking about this, with, I think it's a good idea for the first meeting in January, when we're smack in the middle of the budget season, to just lay out what does that mean? Because we get a lot of questions about it, why do we still offer tuition? And I think just in a neutral way to say, here's the cost of keeping it tuition-based and here's what it would cost if we didn't, just as a factual information.
Debbie, in that factual information session, could you also include just for our, um, kind of orientation, to understand what other districts do as well?
Yes, we know what everybody does across the state.
Because I think that would be helpful to kind of put it in the context of maybe whatever it is that you're going to address for us.
Yes.
We always like to know.
Excellent.
Not that we're going to do anything necessarily, but again, we always like to know what other districts are doing.
And this is our sixth year offering full-day kindergarten?
We started in September of oh-eight. Yes, this is, oh, seven, wait a minute.
Six, I know, because my son, Sam is in seventh grade and, and it was, he was in first grade.
This is our seventh year. Our first year was oh-eight, oh-nine, so nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, the year ending in June of two thousand and fourteen was the end of our sixth. So this is the beginning of our seventh year.
This year, right?
Yes.
Okay, and, um, over that, that seven-year period, we have, when, when full-day kindergarten was first offered, how many half-day sessions were we offering in the beginning and it has shrunk to?
Seven out of ten.
So, and we?
Seven half-days?
Yes, because I know, I remember the first year, if you remember, as the Assistant Superintendent wrote the grant. I was hoping for sixty percent of interest.
Right.
And we ended up with seventy, which was more than we thought. And then the next year went to eighty. And then, and now we're up to greater than ninety.
And so that, the need for offering a half, but we had half-day kindergarten at all three elementary schools and now we only have one half-day session over all three.
And we, we go and pick up the kids all over town to bring them to that one, because by law, you must offer a free kindergarten experience. So that's our free.
Right.
And, um, we, we really are not interested in, in going toward the model where if you only want half, you come to school with all your friends and go in the same class. And then at some point, somebody says, you and your friend leave and everybody else gets to stay. It's not good for fi- for five-year-olds to do that. So we need to reserve a half-day class somewhere in the district if we're going to continue to charge tuition.
What is the enrollment of that half-day class? Do we know? Nineteen?
Nineteen, I was going to say twenty. So there really aren't many families that are really interested in that anymore. So, I think that if, if the committee agrees, we would like to come back and, without making a recommendation, and just neutrally explain what that would be. And you can certainly take it under advisement and think about it. The Department of Education has SIF requirements, which is School Interoperability Framework. That's what SIF stands for and the, this has been going on for a number of years and they continue to not deliver in a timely fashion when they promise it. But what it basically is, is we have more requirements that edge up every single year. And the, the eventual goal is to make the data sharing between public schools and the Department of Ed seamless. So that's what interoperability is referring to. So there are more and more requirements that of course it's unfunded, so more and more things that the district has to do to move us toward that seamless interoperability framework with the Department of Ed. Stay tuned. Been about six years now, I think. We have mandated Department of Education training for teachers of any student who, for whom English is a second language. We don't have many kids in the district, but you never know what classes they're going to end up in. All teachers now, in order to re-license in the future, need to have, um, their sheltered English immersion endorsement, which is that they've taken this training on solid techniques to teach children for whom first, English is not their first language. That's been interesting, because teachers, our teachers who try to get into spots, the Department of Ed is not offering enough slots, so you get shut out. And a little bit of nightmare, but it's still a mandate. Those are some examples of things that are not accounted for.
Steve? In the interest of letting, uh, Mrs. Spinelli continue with her presentation, do you want questions later or while she, while you're presenting?
It, it, it's up to you.
I want to help you, you know, if you want to.
Bill has more detail about many of these things, but it, so your question may be answered, but maybe not, I don't know, so.
I just have like three quick questions.
Go right ahead.
Sorry. Number one, uh, on the line of Katie's thinking, um, with the interactive whiteboards, these are an expense, I don't know what that number is off the top of my head yet. But, um, is there like some kind of, uh, you know, comparable numbers we have? Like, do we have the right number of whiteboards or are we severely deficient now that adoption has taken place in the, if you will, industry? Right, so I don't know where we sit on that, you know, literally, I don't know. And the other question I had was, uh, maybe I misunderstood you, Devin, I apologize if I did. The school, the SIF stuff, you said the DOE is slow to come, if you will, is that a, a?
Yeah, I think four years ago, they planned to have their end fully developed, so that we just had to do our stuff and their end is not fully developed.
So I guess my question to that point is, have we spent money on stuff doing our due diligence? that's now mothballed or gathering dust that they can't implement yet?
No, I think it's more, it's more the opposite. The more is that they told us a few years ago, we would have to be prepared to do X and Y, but then we had to wait for them to do something on their end. So if you, you remember the, um, the early days, well, not in the early days, it was when I was the assistant, but we had the, the federal grant dollars, the, um...
Race to the Top.
Race to the Top money. We had put some of the Race to the Top money aside to address this issue.
Okay.
And then continued the next year, and, and we did that three years in a row, and then they hadn't done their part, so we actually couldn't spend it on that. So we reallocated it and spent it on other things that we had put in our Race to the Top proposal. So basically, it's that they tell us to hurry up and get ready, and we, we plan and know what we're going to do, and then they don't do their end, so we're stalled out. But we haven't spent any money that isn't good.
Oh, okay, great, thank you.
It's more or less that it's just a guessing game. They say to do it, we wait, and then they don't deliver it.
And Bill, that, the other question was, we can discuss that later as we go on, this is high-level stuff.
Well, yeah, but I can give you a kind of a, basically, you're looking at between fifteen, sixteen hundred dollars per whiteboard setup, which is a whiteboard, projector, um, and all the cabling requirements that go along with it. The elementary level, uh, again, actually, that was started off with, um, grants from...
Faces.
Faces, and then it was really district-wide adopted, and so every elementary classroom has an interactive whiteboard and projector. The, the middle school obviously started picking up on it, uh, pretty quickly after that because of, of the way the curriculums were, were changing and going into it. And, you know, what we've done to the best we can is if we do have, uh, you know, some budget money at the end of the year, if we're fortunate enough, an electric account or something like that, where we can outfit a classroom or two or three and, and try to do that yearly, um, it's, that's the only way that the Ahern, quite honestly, has gotten to where it is, and even the high school has gotten to the point that it is, because we didn't have specific funds to do that. The only advantage, to be honest with you, in the fact that we are a little bit behind the curve is, is that the new technology, which is now touchscreen interactive whiteboards. We did our first rollout on that this year, uh, here at the high school. They have a number of classrooms, they have, there's a few at the Ahern as well, um, and we even did a couple at, at the Borough School. And the new technology also gives us the ability not only be, um, it's, it's software agnostic. So we basically, where we had to buy a smart board in the past, if we wanted that for the math area, well, these new, the new equipment can run smart software, um, and not be on the smart technology. So we're, we're effectively able to do anything that we could do with a multiple level of, of whiteboards across the district. So I think we've, we've accomplished, um, a, a lot of goals, but it is, when you look at the number of rooms we did this year, as an example, when we had a little bit of money left over at the end of the year, we did an entire department in the high school. But again, we have to do five to six classrooms just to do that, because teachers move from room to room, and if they don't have the same technology available to them, uh, then you end up with a problem where they can't teach a course the way they just did for, for Class A, for Class B. So we have to be very, you know, dialed in as far as how are we going to implement these, this package, unless we have the money to do the whole thing, which we really, at this point, don't. So I think, you know, we're trying to do it in, in as organized a fashion as we can. And, you know, we've made some good headway in the last couple of years, but I think it's, it's really going to be kind of mandatory for us to get that, because that's what the teachers now, you know, we're trying to hold them to a standard, and now we have to give them the technology to do it as well, so.
What would the price be for this new touchscreen that increases the price?
No, it's, it's a sixteen hundred dollar unit is, it used to be like two thousand dollars for the old style, and now it's down to sixteen hundred for the new style, so.
Oh, but there are some content classes in, in departments, in some classrooms, that don't need the whole interactive whiteboard. They're happy with a short throw projector.
Right.
Which interfaces with the computer, and that, that's enough. So we're saying either or. We're not saying that every room suddenly has to have, you know, the whole setup. So we're very careful about what, what they actually need and not, we're not going overboard and providing equipment that somebody won't use, so we're thoughtful, working with them, saying, do you just want the short throw projector, or do you need the whole setup? And it really often depends on what they teach and what software is available, um, that supports that.
Do you guys have a perspective on whether more classrooms need more technology? Or whether you feel like we're okay?
Well, like, some classes don't need them, but more so like the English classes, they, they sometimes need them, and, but some of the old ones don't work as well, because the pens, like, stop connecting, and then you have to reconnect it. But the, the touchscreen ones, which are in the math department, are wonderful. They are really nice, and like, the students can just go up there, and then when you're solving a problem, you can just go right on the board, which is very helpful, but some classes just don't need them. But then it, that's a whole, like, department that doesn't need them, but like, the departments such as like math and like science stuff like that would need them.
Absolutely right.
Yeah.
So social studies, for example, the social studies department has not asked to have every interact, because they're, they're doing a lot of content that they're using to project, but they're not necessarily having kids go up and solve problems, so it's a little bit different in how it's delivered.
I agree with that, like, for example, like, the music department has like no need for like a whole smart board in, in the classroom, but something like, for a class, like AP Chem that I take, like Mr. Sharptier uses it every single day to teach us through PowerPoints and through problems and everything. And my math teacher uses it, Ms. Carlson, pre-calcus, every single day, while we don't really need that in like French and English or something like that. So I think it all depends like by department, really.
So I'm going to try to summarize what you guys just said. Sounds like we got to fix the ones we have, but we don't have a lot of classrooms where you really wish you had one. Is that fair?
Because the classrooms that we, that already have them are wonderful, but then the classes that don't have them, they don't need them.
Okay, thank you.
But we, we do have classes that need the short throw projectors that don't have those. So every class is going to need something, but not necessarily an interactive whiteboard. So they supported exactly what we thought, working with the department, which is...
Right, we're right on track.
We're being thoughtful and careful about who really needs them, who doesn't, and not just saying, everybody take one and see what you can do with it. So, because we're thoughtful about what we buy and why we're buying it.
Yeah, and each, and each, each, uh, department has different needs, as an example, the, uh, language department. You know, its whole technology is different in requirements, so sign language, foreign language, you know, we went through an upgrade, equipment-wise on that, we're going to go through a, a new upgrade on software on it. We tried something, it didn't work as well as we want, so we're trying a second one right now, which seems to be...
In the language lab.
Yeah, in the language lab. So it's, it's, it really is department by department, what type of technology do we need, um, to make this really kind of deployed properly. So I think we've done a, a good job, again, not just rushing out and throwing stuff up, but, but looking at each department and prioritizing what, what the needs are.
Well, it's, it's nice for the public also to hear the number at the end, so, so nobody's fantasizing about a twenty thousand dollar piece of commercial-grade equipment. We're talking under two grand, and, and the, the faculty's familiar with how to use this technology, and the students are familiar with how to, how to interact with it as well. So it's comforting to see the prudence and, and how we're doing it. I just didn't know if we were like grossly behind or right in the middle or whatever.
Say a little behind, but not grossly, no.
Okay, thanks. I, I didn't mean to pull us off to the side there too much, thank you. But I did.
Pass over to Bill for all of the exciting details of the budget. Steve, next time you say three quick questions, I don't know if we're, whether we'll...
I said we could answer it later.
We will. Sorry.
To, uh, to Deb's point on part of her slides, you know, uh, trying to maintain, if not increase, some of our current offerings, um, obviously, anything we do with increasing, um, you know, computer science course, as we did a couple of years ago with the video lab, all of that type of stuff, we, we try to build in thoughtfully within the budget process, because again, rather than get hit with large lumps, we try to expense it as we go. Obviously, we're continuing on our, our, um, five-year cycle of, of the curriculum, uh, cycle assessment, so there's changes that always come through with the budget process, um, relative to that. Class sizes have, have really been the key, I think, to, to Foxborough, um, at least what I hear from most of the parents. Uh, I know with our kids going through, the classes were a little bit larger at the time, uh, they went through, but I think the, uh, the nice, you know, the nice thing with the sizes that Foxborough currently is maintaining is I think the kids are getting the most they can, especially at the younger levels, uh, which is where the critical side of this, the, the whole component is. Special education, obviously, is, is always a topic. I think we do a very good job in this time, um, you know, I think back to Arlene Grubert and, and right now with, um, Sandra Einzel, the, you know, we're very fortunate, we're only, uh, with about twenty kids outside of the district. We have some very good programs internally in the district. They do cost us money, but obviously, we, we're able to do that more efficiently and, and I think give a better offering to the children, um, but we have to take that all into consideration when we build the budget. And then the, the supply side of it, I think, you know, most people look at these budgets, um, you know, I always laugh at the, the different terminology, ground-up, uh, zero, you know, zero-based budgeting. In effect, we always have, and I said this, you know, for the last three years I've been here, we do start, our, our single lowest point is starting with our, our salaries, and we do that by person. So there is no, you know, just X amount of dollars for our English math or something. It's every single teacher that we have throughout the district, what are their steps, what are their raises going to be? Do we have someone leaving, is someone coming in to replace, are we doing some type of a modification? So we have all the, the backup that does that for the entire salary side. As you know, that's, uh, probably close to eighty-five percent of our budget sits on the salary side. So, you know, once you really have that nailed down, you kind of know where you're going there. As far as the, the expense side, though, um, you know, we, we really do try to keep a reasonable level of expenses. I know having a wife that teaches in another district where they really don't have the expense money, it really puts a big burden on the teachers to get the job done, if you don't have the resources within the classroom. So I think Foxborough is very fortunate in that fashion, um, that, you know, the, the teachers, when they need something, we make sure that they have the appropriate tools to get the job done. You know, as far as this goes, as, as we talked earlier, um, you know, we're presenting it here, um, and then, you know, we'll have, uh, a standard of four to five, I think you may all remember that, uh, our budget starts with a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar deduct in our salary accounts. That was something that was put in place years ago by the AdCom. And what it really does is it says that we know that there's going to be retirements, obviously, in December. I have no idea who's retiring and how many they're going to be. It really requires us to hit, in a good year, a, a minimum of four to five, uh, depending on what we're losing. If you're losing, you know, uh, in areas like the maths and the sciences, um, you don't have the luck of getting in lower-level ones that are very talented to, to move your programs forward. So, uh, sometimes we're taking a, a, a trade-off when we lose somebody who's retiring, and, and you don't get any savings out of it. And, and sometimes, you know, you are fortunate, you're bringing in a younger, you know, uh, teacher at, at the lower end of the scale and, and losing somebody on the upper end. So that hundred and twenty-five thousand is a, a mark that I start, Debbie, with every sa- every summer, and every hire that she has, she's trying to balance against where are we going to end up here?
Trying to subtract from one twenty-five and get to zero, so I have to make up that difference in the hiring. So I have my list of the person who exited the position, what they were making, and then who we're bringing in, and sometimes it's not a, a, you know, a reduction. So that's a challenge, but I'll, I'll thank the town for my little summer salary game. So far, it's been okay.
I, I think that, again, speaks to the thoughtfulness of hiring a teacher based on their qualifications.
Yes.
And that it's not just about a dollar figure.
It isn't. We always say, let's get the best person we can, because that's what our kids deserve. But it, then, it, it's just me that has the challenge. Because everybody else just gets the best person they can, and then I just have to worry about how that translates in the savings, since a hundred and twenty-five thousand was already removed.
Right.
So it's, it, one summer, it got a little close.
And, and I, and, and I did this exercise for Deb last year. We are going to run into a couple of years, uh, it's not this year, but I believe, um, two years from now, it's going to be very tight, because we have very few teachers that are in that class, that area.
Retire.
Uh, from a retirement, unless they just retire early. So it's going to get challenging in that particular year, uh, or two, that we, we run into that.
I think it might start this year, I'm just going to make a little prediction, because it's really my peer generation that we were all, pro- two and a half, and around nineteen eighty-one, so if you remember that, when the property tax was capped, a lot of educators lost their job and didn't re-enter education because of it. That's my generation. So, um, I will tell you that it could, it could be this year that we first see the squeeze where we don't actually have four to five retirements. We'll see, but I know that I don't have a lot of age peers right now in the district at all.
Yeah, and when, and, and people hear other retirements, they hear that, you know, some other people leave, and they think we have a higher number. The, the reality is that really has to be teachers. If it's ed assistants or custodians or anything like that, the, the dollar values aren't the same, you know, caliber that you're dealing with. So, um, you know, it takes two or three of those to make up for even, you know, even actually more than that to, to make up for something on, on the upper level. One of the other things in the budget process is obviously, to the best we can, trying to determine what the grants and revolving accounts can be, because this budget, um, is a difficult budget in the sense that it's an all-in budget, which basically says, day one, we're referring to every expense that we believe we're going to spend during the year, and we're trying to account for all of the revenue. And it's a little easier on the town, so I think we've got a great working relationship, and Randy's done a, a great job as far as really predicting. He tends to be conservative, uh, in his predictions, so we're, we tend to, you know, when we get to the budget and we've said, okay, it's X amount of dollars from the town, the town is usually, by the time we're, we're done voting, they have that X amount of dollars. The thing we still don't know, and usually don't know until mid-summer, and sometimes even later, is what's going to be in our, in our grants, because that's when those are actually written and approved. So, you know, we've run from some years where the grants have gone, you know, downward, some where they've gone upward. As, as this particular year had, we had one grant that was dropped, fortunately, it was a small amount. We had one grant that was brought on for almost the same size, and then we had the, the Title I, which gave us that, the ability for that, uh, half a math position. Had that not happened, obviously, we wouldn't have been able to do that, uh, we wouldn't have had the funding for it. The revolving accounts, um, you know, um, a number of years ago, they were obviously considerably higher than where they are today. Over the last three years, uh, working with you guys especially, um, I've used a lot of the money in the revolving accounts, not only for our budget process, but to do some of the work around the, the school that, that you've wanted, um, you know, the turf field, the, the security camera, uh, money that we've put some away for, the track renovation over at the Ahern was almost fully funded out of revolving accounts. So over the last couple of years, we've spent over two hundred thousand dollars doing things that are non-recurring, um, you know, not necessarily directly, you know, curriculum-based, but using revolving accounts to do it, and pulled down our revolving accounts quite a bit, uh, to the point where I, again, even Randy looking at them now, it doesn't seem to be as concerned to, that they're at a number level that they used to be. You know, we're, we've really kind of trunched those way down, and I'll give you a breakdown on that for the next meeting, so you can see how that's all worked out through there. But again, I think it's the appropriate use, and we're, the town's benefiting from the fact that, that we are using that money, uh, in that sense. Our budget, uh, is now thirty-one million, seven hundred thousand, four hundred and thirty-five dollars. It's an increase of, uh, uh, one million, one hundred ninety-one thousand, eight hundred fifty dollars, or four point oh five percent over last year. Gives you a quick little comparison of the last, uh, since two thousand and eight forward. And, you know, as you can see, we're, we're basically, for the last three years, uh, been in that roughly one point two million dollar range. Again, the largest portion of it, as you'll see in the detailed portion of your budgets, is in the salary contractual increases. We are running a two percent COLA increase in this, this is the last year of the, uh, teacher's contract, so for FY sixteen, uh, that will be a two percent increase, uh, in the COLA side of it. And then obviously, as I said, you have steps and lanes, uh, in which teachers, if they either, uh, gain additional educational requirements, um, can move across those lanes as well. So, and obviously, every year that here, they move the steps. About one-third of our teachers are on the top step, two-thirds of our teachers are still moving through steps. So obviously, they get that annual increase on the step side as well. Enrollment-wise, uh, we're looking at, uh, what we believe to be a dip, uh, in this coming year, that's, we've kind of been on a relatively, uh, consistent level of dip over the last few years. Our high year was, uh, was back, I think, in two thousand and nine, eight or nine, um, and, uh, actually, I think we'll have an autograph shortly in front of this. But, uh, again, we're, we're fairly consistent on our outer district, um, programs. Our preschool has stayed fairly consistent. Again, the preschool is really based on students with needs that are, um, three and four years old. They are determined, uh, in testing to, uh, to have a requirement that advanced, um, you know, capabilities within the school system at, at an earlier age might be able to, to help them with. And then, uh, for every one of those trials, there's, there is to be a, um, a peer child also, and the peer child, that's, that is paid tuition, uh, if a parent wants to put them in, but it gives them a chance to have some socialization, uh, and also be in a program that has an educational environment for a child that, that's either three or four years old moving forward. So, um, that's why that enrollment stays pretty consistent, um, you know, fortunately, that the, the level of children with the extra need at the, uh, younger level has stayed consistent within the town itself. As you can see, here's really that, that, uh, enrollment thing. As I said, two thousand and six, I guess, was the actual, the high year, uh, in the town. You know, I said this last year, and I, and I guess I'm, I was a little ahead of where we are, but, uh, and again, I'm seeing it in my own neighborhood, and, and I can't imagine it's not happening across the town. There's four houses for sale in my neighborhood, and all younger families are moving in with kids. And it's all, it's all, you know, uh, my generation are a little older that's moving out, because they just have large homes and don't need the, the space anymore. So I think that you're going to start seeing that type of resurgence. There is not a lot of building going in town, so it's not a matter of we're going to have the hundred-house developments going in place. We've had things at the, the, the Foxborough Hospital, um, that have happened, but those are pretty mature at this point. Most of those houses are built, um, the apartments that are there are, you know, some rented, some aren't rented, but, you know, there's not a lot more going on, some condos and some smaller homes going, uh, behind that area, but it's not, again, huge surges. So I think, you know, in, in that particular sense, we're, we don't have a pent-up demand on housing that's going to all of a sudden flourish, uh, within the, the school, district, or the town. housing that's going to all of a sudden flourish within the school district or the town. But again, I think what you're going to see is the continuation of homes turning over and younger families moving in as they're, you know, available to them. As Deb said, from a position point of view, you know, the increase of the half-mass specialist, again, we hope that to make it a full, but if the grant funding does, you know, get lost and goes back to the level it was previously, then obviously, we don't have the other half of that funding, and we'll just be able to maintain where we are today. You know, middle school, having the second integration technologist, and again, this is, to your point, Steve, this is extremely important, with the more technology we put out there, whether it's the, you know, foreign language labs, or the interactive whiteboards within the classrooms, the integration specialists really are what's making that whole program successful. Because the more technology we put out there, the more we have to teach, you know, the teachers how to use it appropriately and get the most out of it. And even working with students using different components of that, it's critical. We could put all the technology we want in the world in schools, and if we don't really support it, then we're wasting our time.
Yeah, adoption, adoption is everything for that part.
That's right. And then, as Deb said, the two teachers are positions that we believe on the high school level at this point. So our net change is down one-tenth of a position, effectively, in accomplishing the goals that have been, you know, prioritized through the district. Salaries, again, no big surprise. The biggest portion of the increase is coming out of the salary side of it. A million sixty-seven thousand. A hundred and eighteen thousand is in the actual expense side of it. And down below are just some of the larger category items, anything over a two-thousand on a single line within the budget. You know, instructional materials, really throughout the district, we've held the line quite a bit over the last couple of years. And what we're finding is really that we're getting into the middle of the year and running a little short in some of those areas. Not a lot of money, but, you know, when you're looking at the middle school of six thousand dollars, you know, for eight hundred students, I think it's not something that's shocking in either the material or supply accounts. The high school really did put forward a need for the interactive whiteboards, and again, not taking a chance here of not being able to do at least one series of classrooms this summer. There's nine thousand in there, and that would do a department's worth. So, you know, we think that would be, you know, prudent at this point. Again, high school's no different than the middle school on the instructional supplies. The extracurricular, you know, issues that we're facing, one of the things that Deb brought to you, I guess a little over two months ago, was the high school initiative, which, you know, really is student leadership within technology. We're gonna run that program. We did it this year and run it again next year. Our cost for the program itself is about twelve thousand dollars, you know, plus a stipend, and so we're gonna cover that. And then, I think it was two weeks, two meetings ago, you accepted the PCC program with Stonehill to give students the extra opportunities during the summer program.
That's that Project Contemporary Competitiveness, so that includes us, the membership to the right, the twenty-seven hundred dollars that's in there for that.
One of the things we're running into, obviously, as we're upgrading equipment, especially on the high school level and the science labs and stuff, is that a lot of this new stuff, the electronic microscopes, all needs to be calibrated and adjusted on a pretty regular basis. It's not something we had in the budget, and we've had to kind of scrape by to get some of that stuff done over the last couple of years. So basically, what I'm putting in is just about five thousand dollars. That should be able to keep us on somewhat of a regular program and reviewing all of that equipment every year. And even if it's only, we do kind of a series of it this year, a series of it next year, just to keep it in good operations that way. As Deb said, the federal requirement under the homeless transportation, we had budgeted last year for twenty-five thousand, twenty-four-five thousand dollars. It actually ended up coming in at thirty-seven thousand dollars. This is the third year in a row that it's increased pretty significantly. We do get, or the town does get, a portion of this back based on our filings. We get, last year, we got about fifty percent of it back to the general fund. So we track this, obviously, very closely, so that we can put that money forward as far as a recoverable. But unfortunately, we still have to put the money up front. And this year, we're actually even running higher. So I know I'll exceed my budget this year, and hopefully can make it up in other transportation areas. The outer district, you know, tuition side of things, they've been going up fairly steadily between three and four percent. And, you know, there's not a lot of negotiations that we can do. Obviously, some of these programs are very and highly specialized. And so while we, obviously, will complain at different times and levels on what their cost increases are, especially if they're above what we would consider the norm for what other districts and stuff are getting, you know, we really don't have a lot of opportunity to refuse to pay the differences.
We don't have any more students going there.
No, no.
It's just that they're going up, and advisories come out from the state level to them about how much they can go up, because they will cap how much they can go up. And I will say that they take every advantage to go up to whatever the cap is that's allowable. But that's the way it is.
One of the things that, we started this last summer, and you're all aware of, that we were spending a lot of our CIP money on, as far as the district was concerned, was the upgrade to the entire technology network. And what that brings, obviously, is going up to the ten-gig system for the backbone of all of our schools. Much higher speed, much higher throughput is also a cost, just like you have at home. If you decide to go up to the highest level of bandwidth for your internet at home, you're paying a little bit more than you do on the lower level. Well, do that across five buildings and, you know, twenty-seven hundred students, and you obviously do have an additional cost. I think, I have to be honest with you, I think Aaron has done a phenomenal job working with Verizon. He actually got us pricing on that that is considerably better than what Comcast and a couple others were offering. So now that has been brought into this building. We are fiber. Throughout the district, we are ten-gig to every building at this point right now, and we're just now getting into all the switchgear, which will actually give us the functionality within the classrooms very shortly here. So to be honest with you, a five-thousand-dollar increase in what we were paying for an internet is actually very little concerning the capability change we are just about to really launch. One thing he has noted, though, is that we, you know, obviously, with all our licenses, every piece of equipment in this building, every piece of software, no matter how specialized it is, has a licensing requirement. We're no different than any business or any home. Technically, we're supposed to make sure everything is licensed appropriately. Fortunately, a lot of our licenses are based on being a school, and you get grouped or bundled, you know, licensing. So it's not like you pay one-to-one, but you do have to pay for, you know, enterprise-type licensing throughout. And we did find a number of things that weren't up to date on our licensing, that we're now making sure we have all of that corrected. And we also found some that we weren't, you know, we didn't buy the right licensing level to really give us all the tools we wanted, and that would obviously help us to get rid of some of the things that we don't need anymore, if we can consolidate now. Microsoft's a perfect example. So again, we're kind of evaluating that, but we've put a few thousand dollars more in to hopefully kind of take care of all of the little hiccups that we have in the process right now, and some of the stuff we're finding. One of the big advantages we had as a municipality was what they call the E-rate discounts. And this was really driving down our telephone costs throughout the district. We were saving, at one point, as much as forty thousand dollars a year because of the federal E-rate discount. Now, what they've done is they've changed their focus from being just general things like telephones and web access and web filtering and stuff like that, to really trying to go to a focused thing on technology upgrades. Well, ironically, they're way behind the curve, because one of their biggest things is upgrading to, you know, higher, you know, internet capabilities, higher switchgear. Well, I mean, we're not the stormtroopers here. We didn't do ours first, and we're at that point already. So most of the districts have already realized that that was their biggest bottleneck and have already gotten past it. Now they're gonna offer all this money to go in that direction. But the way they're doing it, too, is based on the level or tier that you fall within as a school district. Well, we fall in one of what they would classify as one of the least needy. The cities get the big requirements, so almost all the money will be sucked up by the bigger cities before it even has a chance of getting down to us. So what that means to us is effectively, we're losing eighteen thousand dollars in discounts next year in an area that we were always able to get our bills knocked down, and we have to make up the difference in our process. The, and again, the tuition reimbursement by contract, you know, we did do a three-year stepped increase that we would allow for both teachers and assistants to get a little bit more money towards their requirements in the contract phase of it, and that was about two thousand each, roughly.
So it sounds like, then, there's some areas where we've saved money in the past that we maybe need, we may need to make some adjustments in the future.
Absolutely.
And that's something for us to all have kind of on our radar, as we talked earlier as well about retirements and, so, as, but like always, it's an ever-changing landscape, right, when it comes to the budget, so, okay.
Revolving accounts and the usage, we have basically, outside of town funding, we have three different buckets of money that we've been using. The revolving accounts, as I mentioned earlier, state and federal grants, and circuit breaker. And as you can see, in FY sixteen, we're expecting a little bit of upper trend on the grant side of it just because of that Title I continuation, or hopeful Title I.
And that is totally, and unfortunately, that is totally dependent on if our poverty level stays up a little, because that's why we got more money, because Foxborough's poverty level went up a little bit. So I guess that's the good and the bad. We have more families in need, and we got a little bit more money out of it. But if that goes back down to where we typically are, then we won't get the money.
Right.
So we're just hoping we stay just over that bar for at least another year, so that we can do the slow increase of what we need for the math support. But we'll see.
Right. The revolving accounts, as you can see, we're gonna be a little less dependent on it. We had a large chunk of money back about four years, five years ago, that came in from the spoke program out of the Ahearn. And so we've been trying to just take a piece of that each year and layer it down, because obviously, if we used it all in one year, the next year, we'd be coming back for a large chunk from the town side. So we're down now to basically, you know, a point where I think we can make it another three or four years before that's entirely evaporated. And then, then obviously, so what I'm trying to do is wean us off of it a little each year, and again, not make it such a shock when we finally get to the last thing where it's all gone. Circuit breaker is funding that we receive from the state relative to our special needs program. It really deals with trying to give a relief valve over a certain dollar value for a cost to a program, sending a child to an outside program, in most cases, is what it's referring to. The number's in roughly the twenty-eight thousand dollar range. Anything above that, they'll split with you fifty-fifty. Transportation is involved, so there's a reimbursement on the transportation for that as well. But we do have some programs, to be honest with you, that are two-hundred thousand dollars. So while we're splitting, it's, we're putting up a lot upfront. So we, you know, we get this money back in, and then obviously, we have eighteen months in which to push it back out through our program. So that's why we're continuously cycling that back out into the next year's budget to use backup. One of the things that Randy and I have kind of come to terms with is that the reason I don't take any one of these grants all the way down to zero in a given year is that always gives us a one-year cushion to be able to say, okay, if a grant goes away, if the circuit breaker drops significantly, can we still survive that next year's budget process without throwing everything upside down? And, you know, again, we did use a lot of our revolving stuff to bring balances down. I think Randy was concerned at one point in time that we had too much money there. We've definitely taken care of that problem. There's very little left in a lot of the revolving accounts that carry balances. But, you know, on their grants and the revolvers, again, on grants and circuit breaker, I mean, we really are trying to make sure that we always have that roughly one year out. It's not exactly working that way. We're a little under that in most cases, but it would be a culture shock if all of a sudden to the town, we didn't have this money available to us in any given year, so.
Go ahead, Steve. There's stuff going on at the State House, too, where the governor has taken it upon himself to cut some budgets that there's contention over whether or not there's the authority to do that. So that's, again, a prudent way to run things, because it's up in the air and still in play.
Yeah. And that's been consistent for quite a number of years. I mean, I guess, you know, when you're on my side of the table, you kind of get immune to it a little bit over time, because they will move it up and down, you know, year in and year out, and you're just trying to keep things level. So I think, you know, a lot of the changes that they're making, there will be some impact potentially to a community like ours. There's a lot more impact to some of the bigger communities that are gonna face some of those cuts that they're talking about. So I'm kind of, you know, again, other than the Chapter One, I'm comfortable with what we have in most of our projections here for next year on grants and revolving accounts. Chapter One, really, to me, is a dart against the wall. We got a one-time big boost, and that could be all it is, but we may get lucky and it stays with us a year or two more. So the allocation itself, ironically, is, in each one of these numbers, obviously, it's fifty-nine point three percent, you know, twenty-four point something, but they are literally within tenths of a percent of the same percentage as last year. And I find that actually a little interesting, because we've done a very good job on the technology side as far as doing quite a bit of work in that area, you know, both with what the town gave us. And I'll give you an example of that. Last year, the town gave us a hundred-and-fifty-six thousand to start the whole program with the upgrade for the network and the switchgear. And, you know, surprisingly, and I saw the quotes at the time as far as what it was gonna cost. Aaron came in, and he went to work with the vendors he's worked with for years, and that hundred-and-fifty-six, we ended up having to come up with a hundred-and-sixty-eight. Instead of being a three-year program at a hundred-and-fifty-six, the one-sixty-eight did the entire thing. So he's been phenomenal for us as far as how far we've gotten with our technology money, and, you know, a lot further along than I think I expected we could get. And in some cases, forty percent less than the state bid levels.
Right.
So this is not, you know, it's not that he's just doing something. He really is doing something that not every community is getting away with, so.
Don't let him go.
No. No, he's a great guy to work with. I think he's worked well with the three of us, and where we're trying to go as well. Next steps, obviously, as Deb said, we're gonna continue to monitor, you know, whether it's the position issues at the high school level, or any other, you know, potential new information that comes out to us, revenue-wise, expense-wise, or other issues. I think on the revenue side, Randy does a very good job as far as keeping us in tune. I don't expect we'll see another revenue upgrade from him or update from him until probably late January. But, and unfortunately, I think to Steve's point, the state budgets and stuff don't come out, you know. We're well done by the time they actually will give us any real information there. You know, tonight's meeting and then the January fifth will be the next discussion time for this budget. As I said, at that time, I'll bring all the revolving accounts, and, you know, so you'll have a look at that. Actually, I got those out to you earlier, so you can kind of see where those are. And then your hearing for vote is January twenty-sixth. And obviously, we have on February eleventh our full AdCom discussion, but hopefully.
That date has changed, so community members might wanna make a note of that.
Which, the twenty-sixth?
The eleventh.
Oh, February eleventh?
I think it was originally the week earlier.
Right.
So it's been moved to February eleventh.
So you might just wanna make sure you later circle the February eleventh. You may have had another date on your calendar, but that was the early, when Randy first gave us the first calendar, when we had the joint meeting. I think it had a different date on that, at that time, when we had the joint budget meeting. So make sure you make a note that it's now February eleventh.
Yeah, there was a conflict on their side, so we were able to reschedule. You know, again, I think as minor points, and, you know, you're welcome to obviously look at any part of the budget, and, you know, we'll discuss them. But, you know, we've even had to go down, all the way down to the level of these things like the AEDs, the ability to revive somebody if they go, I mean, service contracts on those continue to go up. We kind of kept the price at the same level in our budget for a couple of years, and it's gotten to the point now where I just can't absorb it, so, and we have...
It's the defibrillators, in case.
Yeah, the defibrillators. We have probably thirty-five of those in the district.
And they have to be looked at every single year.
Oh, every year they have to be upgraded and checked.
If you remember, we had gone a few years, many years ago, without doing that, so...
I'm on a regular program.
We're really making sure that we're being proactive with everything.
Isn't that a liability issue, isn't it?
Oh, it's absolutely a liability issue. We have, every sports team that's out there has one with them, and obviously, we have them within the buildings themselves. The nurses have access to them. But there's, you know, it's not just, the service contract basically replaces any of the disposable items on an annual basis that goes through them, but they also do full testing and software upgrades. So they continually are keeping the devices to the highest level that you can, and testing them to make sure that they're working, because obviously, if they don't, then we have to replace them as well. I don't think we, there's not one that we don't need. We really do need to have these where they are throughout the district, so. But it's a lot of different little things, even like that, that start to mount up over time, that you have to kind of make sure you're looking at and taking care of. But it's, it's a lot of different little things even like that that, that start to mount up over time that you have to kind of make sure you're looking at and taking care of.
Questions? Well, there could be a lot of questions there. So just kind of summarizing. Lot of very good thoughtful work, as you guys always do, in preparing the, uh, the proposed budget. And Bill, I don't think I would have wanted to be around your office or Pam's in the last, uh, several weeks in light of what you guys just presented to us. Uh, that's a lot of work. So, a proposed four-point-zero-five percent increase, up one-point-one-nine million, much of which is driven by salaries and expense. Um, Debbie, you've come up with your list of recommended four or five key, uh, positional changes.
Mm-hmm.
Which, um, I think tonight's the first time we're hearing that, right?
Yes.
So I think that's something we need to reflect on.
Right, but not a net increase of positions, actually a decrease of point one, so about even.
Um, so I appreciate the care with which you guys have gone through that. Um, and we do, will have a couple more meetings to discuss this, as you talked about. Uh, otherwise I suspect we'd go into a lot of depth of discussion tonight. The one thing I would like to, uh, request is could our budget subcommittee meet with the two of you? Um, ideally prior to the next public discussion of this. Uh, because I think, you know, I think it'd be great if Katie and Steve were able to formulate an opinion and then come back to the committee with the recommendation on some of those personnel changes. You know, uh, ju- just personally speaking, you know, as you went through them, and I'm just gonna tell you my gut reaction. You know, I, I love the idea of an incremental technology integration specialist, because we're putting so much emphasis there. Uh, yet the idea of reducing an English teacher or a math teacher, you know, made my eyes pop out for a minute. Not to say I question it, but it just makes me think I want to learn more. And I recognize the value of going down two FTEs there is helpful and some of the other things we want to do. But I think if you guys would be willing to, uh, maybe spend a little time and analyze and come up with your own thoughts about where Bill and Amy and Deb are proposing we invest. Uh, it may just give all of us a, an opportunity to have a little more comfort level before we have to get to the, the public vote, if that sounds okay.
Agree.
So, those are my thoughts. I don't know if anybody else has anything they want to add at this time? Steve?
Can I just ask a quick, quick question? Well, no, you were talking about how like some of the science equipment, you know, has, has a spike in it right now, uh, uh, some, some, uh, fun, uh, funding for it. Do we lease that stuff, like science, uh, microscopes and that sort of thing? Is that an, uh, an option? I'm not telling you how to do your job, I'm just asking.
The, uh, we can lease different equipment. Uh, years ago, we used to lease some of the band equipment, cause it's, obviously when you go into major replacements, it's very expensive. The, the difference really is for schools is that we tend to overuse the life, if you will, on assets. Uh, so therefore leasing it is, is a, an expensive option, uh, as compared to buying something that most people would say, well, it's a five-year life, but we're still using it ten years later.
More than an instrument, like a, like a microscope?
Even on a microscope, because, again, you know, this equipment, if it's maintained and taken care of well.
Yeah.
We will use it a lot longer, um, than maybe the general practice within the business environment. And, uh, again, if you're going to lease it over a, a, a five-year period, and you could have basically bought it in a three-and-a-half-year period, it doesn't make a lot of sense to go that route. The town has not really had a huge appetite towards leasing in the past. Uh, again, we borrow, when we do borrow, at a much lower rate, um, than some of the financing rates are on the lease packages.
Ah, okay.
Um, the, you know, as an example, it's one of the reasons we buy our copiers versus leasing them, because we can negotiate a much better price on the buy. Uh, than you can get on the term rates for the lease, uh, itself. And, uh, you know, we continue to drive those prices down each year, um, in our process as well. So, right now, to my knowledge, um, there is, I know there's nothing on the school side that's under release. There is very little, if anything, that I can think of, even on the town side.
I was, I just had my lab hat on and, you know, we would have instruments that needed regular, expensive, third-party calibration to come in. And there were times, there were times when it was worth visiting, not that it must be done that way.
Well, again, I mean, you know.
Your thing's broken.
We're not, we're not working forty-hour weeks in, in labs on microscopes. They, they, there's a part of a semester that they're using the microscopes, there's part of the semester they're not using it. So you can, you can, as long as your teachers and, and, and students are taking care of the equipment.
Right.
You can get a lot longer life out of the actual purchase side of it. Um, you know, it's the old thing, if, if you, if you have a car that, uh, you know, you're leasing and, and basically you put low mileage on it and you just like a new car every five years or every four years, the lease can be really good for you. If you're using it a lot and you're using it for a lot longer, leases don't work. And in this particular environment, especially in schools, our equipment, there, there is not a lot that we don't run. You know, even, even computers. I mean, we run our computers for five to six years, um, in most cases. So it's, it's not like we're on a two- or three-year recycle program to, to get the next highest level of technology. Um, and if you're in a five-year cycle just on computers, the, the least thing, it doesn't work. So it's, it's definitely, it's something you have to keep thinking about and keep looking at. But until you get to the point where you're on just a, what I'd call a hyperspeed, um, replacement cycle in a school district, the lease side's not a, not a good approach. And again, volume-wise, we're not, uh, uh, you know, a forty-hour operational.
Yeah, this was an instrument-specific question, so, you know, thank you. Thanks, Bill.
I know it's a hard time of year. I'm looking at our budget subcommittee now. Um, do you guys think you can get with Bill and Debbie before January fifth?
January fifth?
Isn't that our next?
So other times we've done it individually, because that, you know, I would suggest that again, otherwise it's a posted meeting because it, it's easier to coordinate one person's schedule with ours, I think, so.
Couldn't do it before the, uh, before Christmas.
No.
But, you know, after, or the fifth.
Well, we're there in between, so.
Yeah.
And I think, you know, I think, I mean, obviously dig into whatever you want to. I don't think you have to go into this in depth. Obviously, we have a lot of confidence in Bill and, and all the work that has been done in past years. But, you know, I'm sensitive to a four percent ask, uh, of the town. Um, and that's point one. And point two is, you know, these discussions we could get into at length, like whiteboards versus a point four of this or a, you know, a point five of that. I think those are good trade-off discussions, so.
I agree.
Um, I know the.
I also would welcome it, because some, that's what we're always doing, is prioritizing where we should be investing our dollars. And I think we want, we want to have everything, let's face it. But we, more importantly, we want to be responsible to the town. We're, we've been pretty transparent about what we do and we've been honest in the past years about what we need. And if we're putting forward, forward new positions, why we need them, and what's the changing face of education. And I don't think we can expect the community to accept that if, on the other hand, we don't diligently, uh, really analyze where we might not need a position. So I think that's where we are, as distasteful as it is, I think that's our responsibility.
Well, what's great is you've given us a list of, you, you've figured it out. Here's what we'd say we would go for, and here's what we'd say we could do without. And I just think the committee should analyze that.
I agree. So it would be nice to have another set of eyes, a couple more sets of eyes on it, so. We'll look forward to our appointments.
Okay. Anything else? Can you guys stick it out for one more topic? Cause I would love your perspective on the next topic, and then if you guys want to run, before we get into policy stuff.
Okay.
It's up to you, though.
No, that's fine.
As always.
It's fine, yeah.
Yes, I would like to be here for the.
Actually, I meant two more.
I mean.
Actually, I meant two more topics.
It's not the budget. Gender items gotta be quick.
Yeah, this one's, this next one's always quick, it's the one after this one. Thank you. Alright, so this is, uh, FY fifteen budget status.
Before we move on that, you do all have detailed levels of the budget, which highlight obviously where any of the changes have been made. So, when we do sit down, obviously, we can really point out what the, uh, the breakdowns on all that are important. Uh, budget summary, I can make this real quick for you. Only real difference between this one and the last one is on the second page, we have, under the Ahearn, we have a, um, an EA that's retiring as of December thirty-first. Um, it's a small savings, uh, you know, because obviously we're replacing the, the position, but we're taking, uh, one of the longevity, uh, versions that have been here the longest and obviously we're replacing with something lower selling. So we'll, we'll pick up about five thousand between now and.
Where was that? I'm sorry.
Is that the Ahearn?
Two. Ahearn, under salary.
Thank you.
But other than that, everything else is pretty much, you know, this is kind of the lull in the year before, you know, we really see if anything's gonna change.
So as of today, twenty-nine thousand to the good?
Yep.
Any questions on the current budget status? Okay, so now, my friends down at the end of the table, we need your input on the school counter. Have you heard about?
We need to, we need to.
Oh, yes, we do, thank you.
I would like to make a motion that we accept Mr. Ughus' budget policy.
All second?
All in favor? Thank you, Debbie. Have you guys heard about the calendar?
No.
Not a word.
So here comes some, I think something you'll have an opinion on. Ready?
I hope they do. So, although I'm, I'm going to have no opinion tonight, just so you know. So we usually don't do this till January. Um, we usually look at, I usually make a recommendation for when the start of school is and when the professional development days. And most years, it's pretty standard operating procedure and it goes pretty smoothly. We can do it in one meeting. There's one calendar for the school committee to look at, one recommendation, and usually there's not a lot of controversy. Uh, in looking ahead, though, next year, I realized this is a really difficult calendar. So I thought I would give you the options a month early, let the committee sort of mull this over a little bit. And I'm actually giving you three options. So the dilemma is this. This is our latest Labor Day. So, the Labor Day weekend is four to seven, so the first Tuesday after Labor Day, which is typically when kids come back, isn't until September eighth, which is the latest possible Labor Day and the latest possible school start using the traditional calendar.
Which is great for summer vacations.
Oh, it makes a very nice long summer vacation.
There's probably a flip side to that.
Oh, certainly is. So, when I started looking ahead at this and realizing that it is pretty complicated, that the realization is that with it being the latest school start because of the latest possible Labor Day, if we keep with our tradition of not bringing students back until the Tuesday after Labor Day, which would be September eighth, puts us at a really late, late, late ending in June. Now, if you were a senior next year, you won't care. But if you're anyone other than a senior, so try to imagine yourselves being very affected by this, then, uh, then it, it's not great and so late. So I thought I would share with you, even though it's in very early stage, three possible options for next year's school calendar. And I am calling them the traditional calendar, which is in white. An early return calendar, which is in green, and the earliest return, which is in pink. So I'll just explain what the options represent. So option one, in the, on the white page, which we consider traditional, what Foxborough's pretty much always done. Staff returns before Labor Day for three professional development days. And you'll see on the calendar that those would be, um, Septem- wait a minute. That would be September three, four, five. And then the long weekend, and then kids come on the eighth. Does that make sense?
No.
Seven, no, six, five, four, three, two, one. September first, sorry. One, two, three. See, this is, Janet, I was just going over this. We really need to show what the dates are instead of just saying PD, because it's really hard to read this calendar this way.
Well, but it's right up, it's right above, so it's a week.
Sort of.
Week before the eighth.
Alright. So, uh, staff would come back September one, two, three. We'd have the long weekend, and then kids come in the eighth. However, if you notice, that puts our ending date, without any snow days, to June twenty-two. With the five snow days built in, which, uh, it must be built into your legal calendar. Um, that brings us to possibly the last day of June on the twenty-ninth.
We may as well stay and celebrate the fourth, too.
Stay all year round. So, that's what the late, late Labor Day, and, um, you distributed this already?
Yes.
Okay. So Janet put it at your spot before, um, you arrived, I think. I don't know if you, do you have, have this with the yellow? Okay, if you have them, that would be great. So, um, we actually do keep an, an, a history of when the school year started. Do you have this? Okay. That was just handed out to today's table.
It was on the table.
It was on the table. There you go. So this was helpful. Janet produced this, uh, from her magic computer. And if you look at the last time, Labor Day was on Monday, September seventh, was two thousand nine-ten. And we went with the late start, September eighth for students. But way prior to that, back in ninety-eight, ninety-nine, which was the next time before that, that Sep- Labor Day was on Monday, September seventh, the students did come back before Labor Day. They came back on the second. So this community has done it kind of a couple of ways. So, we've had the late, late start, then we had the earlier start. So one time we did what's proposed on the other two calendars, which is bring the kids back early because of the lateness of the calendar. So, there's no right or wrong. So that's what the white represents. The green calendar, which we're calling early return, brings the staff back on August thirty-first and September one, a Monday, Tuesday, so still only the week before Labor Day. And brings students back on Wednesday the second and, and Thursday the third, keeping the long four-day weekend. And then they start up again on the eighth. So the staff would have two, only two professional development days before the kids, and the kids would get two school days in before Labor Day. So we're gonna, we're calling that, for discussion purposes, early return.
And it changes the end of the year only by one day.
Yes.
But still making it very late.
Yes, and you may ask, why does it only change it by one day? And that is because the, even though you, you see two student days before Labor Day, the, the teachers only have two professional development days, and their five days are built into the calendar. So the professional development day that we're missing in August had to be built in later. You can see it in May. There's a late PD day in May. So that bumps the students' days later. So we, we do do three staff days. We actually work a hundred and eighty-five-day calendar, a hundred and eighty with the students and five days for the staff. And so that early return, um, only gains us one day. Cause we typically get three days in with staff before, and now we're getting four days in, two staff and two students. So that only, that only gains us one day. And then option three, we're calling earliest return. Staff would return on August twenty-fifth for three PD days. Typically what we do at the end of August, so Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, three consecutive professional development days. That's not all that different from what we do now. They came back on the twenty-sixth this year. They typically do come back the last Tuesday of August. And then the students would come the following Tuesday on September first and get three days in. So because this is actually a gain of three days on the, on the a- a hundred and eighty-five-day calendar, because that's, it just happens to be a late Labor Day. But staff, when you look at the physical calendar of August, they're not returning any more unusually than they do. It's just that Labor Day is then deferred. So that actually ends school in June on the seventeenth, which is a Friday, which would be lovely if there's no snow days. And if there are snow days, it could potentially end on Friday, the twenty-fourth, but no later. So since this is quite complicated with a lot of pros and cons to all three options, I thought I would present three possibilities. And our teaching staff actually also, we always consult on the calendar with them. So we sent them this last week, and they will also mull it over and weigh in. It just, we just consult.
Do you have any feedback from that? Did you get any initial feedback?
No, they're, they're gonna spend the next few weeks getting their own feedback.
Deb, can I, can I just ask you a question, uh, which I think is kind of interesting? If you look at the school year starting dates from previous years.
Yes.
The first day students, when you look at it, twenty-thirteen was September third.
Yes.
Twenty-fourteen was September second. And if you look at the proposals, those days, now regardless of when Labor Day is falling, are similar.
Exactly.
It's September first, it's September second.
On the, on the pink and the green.
And the pink and the green.
Yes.
And I guess, you know, I guess the, the issue would be, do the majority of families go away on Labor Day? And is, would that be an impact to them with, um, with the changing of the schedule and the changing of when the onset of school actually?
Yes, the calendar dates.
I would amend that just slightly. I think that's right. But I think it's, do the majority of families prefer to still have time away at Labor Day? Or do they go away?
In June.
In June.
Right.
Right? That's the trade-off.
Exactly, right, right.
So you said it on the front end, but there's also the back end.
Right. And we still would have a four-day Labor Day weekend, so people just go away with the weekend, it's fine. But I think you're right. The calendar dates aren't really changed. Kids are still coming back around September two, three, four, when they typically do. I think it's more of a feeling or a perception that if in your mind, you have until Labor Day with your family, then, then it's about how you think about it, rather than the dates.
My understanding too, and I, you, you'll know this better, is that most districts start before Labor Day.
Yes, that's true.
We're, we're somewhat unusual or unique in that we haven't done that. So, not to say we have to join the masses, but, you know, I mean, I don't think what you're proposing is, is unusual, given.
It's not unusual, and it doesn't mean that we would then in the future always bring kids back before Labor Day. It's not unusual, and it doesn't mean that we would then in the future always bring kids back before Labor Day. It just means this is a difficult year, and you could do something different for this year, as we did back in ninety-eight. Now, you could do something different because of this challenging Labor Day.
Tina, and then Steve.
Well, I seem to remember that the last time this came up, probably it must have been two thousand nine, two thousand ten, that Dr. Martis did a survey of the parent community, and that it was overwhelmingly in favor of coming back after Labor Day. However, you know, parent opinion can change. I don't know. I just, it might be something to think about whether we want to survey our parent population. I also noticed that in the nineteen ninety-eight, ninety-nine, we went back early. But the following year, the committee chose to go back on September eighth, when given the choice. So I wonder if there was some sort of...
Feedback?
Feedback, thank you. That's the word I was looking for. So it's just, again, it is something to think about. But I would be interested in how parents, you know, would perceive this in the community right now.
That's a good point.
I know my mom was a teacher, and our family, it started, school started the day after Labor Day. That was just, that's what I grew up with.
Steve?
Yeah. How or do we know how effective professional development is when it's held back-to-back-to-back in a three, in a three-day versus two and then one out? And are the students at the end of, I'm taking the vacation out for a minute here because the actual vacations during the year don't seem to move. Right? They're the same, it's the same April, it's the same February, it's the same Christmas. Right? So when are people at, you know, we were talking about seven habits earlier, right? When are people at their optimal level for professional development and, you know, absorption of material and implementation in the year? And when are students' chins in their hands watching the clock at the end of the year, right? Like...
Well, they're pretty much doing that every day of the year, but...
Me, too.
I would say this. I think we believe in front-loading professional development because we give teachers new tools or training and new programs that are coming in. But to do two days or three days, we wouldn't want just one, I will say that. But we're willing to sacrifice the third day, I'll let him use the professional development queen right now. If it helps the overall calendar and fixes the late ending in June, that one day isn't as big of a deal.
I mean, we've had so many great presentations of like the staff appreciating the PD that they've had and the collaboration they've had as faculty and stuff. And I just saw, you know, three days turned into two and kind of went, well, jeez. Maybe that quality time as a staff together is vital or really important or, I don't know.
I'm going to hazard a guess. And then we'll talk. But when we surveyed people that last time when Dr. Martis was here, the parents were not in favor of starting before Labor Day, but it wasn't this difficult calendar either, I will say. But the staff was, because they would prefer to get a little bit earlier start and finish earlier in June because it's very hot, et cetera, et cetera. So I'm going to hazard a guess that their opinion probably hasn't changed much. Not that I know which one they'll prefer. But even that many years ago, they were in favor of trying an earlier start. Elliot, you address the PD.
I agree with Deb as far as the two versus three, that we can still accomplish what we need to accomplish in the two days. You know, the other offset of that is when you think about where is that other day going to be? So the further, we have to think about whether it's testing and all of the other things that are on the calendar as the year goes through. And if you have a PD day, it was difficult to really try to place that one in May to where it was optimal for professional growth and learning, at the same time not impacting when we think about PARC testing and MCAS testing and AP and all of those other things that come into play on the calendar itself. So there's other pieces to that puzzle.
So for those academic pieces you just mentioned, it's probably preferable to start students a little bit earlier.
Yeah.
If we were to start earlier, does that push up the start of, you know, things like marching band camp, football practice, sports practice, everything? So that those could be starting as early as like August fifteenth?
Oh, I don't know. I wouldn't hazard a guess as to what they are going to do.
You would think. We would guess.
I'm supposing it probably would. But I don't know.
That may date for a professional development. Teachers are pretty tired already. The students would not get the benefit so late, so late in the year.
It's more, we want to have the teaching time with the students to prepare them. So they're, we don't want to take out another professional development day out when we're trying to get every day we can for students to be prepared for an AP exam.
I know, I know. But I'm just, that, the professional development there means the students will not get as much enrichment.
Well, not necessarily, because what we thought was, we're not taking up a day before all these deadlines of testing. But if there were going to be new programs implemented the following year, we could start with some of it. So actually, as long as it's only one day and not the majority, we're willing to say that there probably are some very good purposes for which that could be used.
I wanted to address the end impact. I know that when we had to run school late in June, I, you can do this. I had to write and have my son text exams early because his camp counseling job. Many, I mean, there were coursework that teachers won't be able to get to on time if they want to take specific summer courses. And there were jobs, some camping jobs, that young people have that start. Because in parts of our country, people are out of school for the summer by the end of May. So it's...
It's going to be a trade-off year.
It's going to be a trade-off year.
For sure. For some. So I think this is a question of how do we minimize the impact for as many as possible.
Do we ask the world in an online survey?
I think part of why Debbie and I thought we put it on the agenda tonight was to start to get informal feedback. So maybe we can see how much informal feedback comes in before we commit to that. We still pay a fee for an online survey, Drew.
Yeah, sure.
So before...
But we may, we may...
Before I'd want to commit that, I think we'll probably get some feedback. I know Frank can help us, as he always does, to get the word out. Thank you, Frank. So I don't know that I want to commit to that yet unless you all feel strongly about that.
Oh, no, I was just wondering what tools we had.
Yes.
So honestly, if I would choose, I'd obviously choose option one, but like, that's just my opinion. No, but if I were to choose like the early ones, I'd choose our early option two. Because it's not just coming back for those three days, but some people, like some teenagers, have jobs that like go until Labor Day, that go through Labor Day. But since even though last year or the years before, like Labor Day started, like we started school in like the seconds. But also, what was I just about to say? I completely, but also students might try to skip those first like couple days. But then again, those first three days or those first two days are just like, here's your syllabus, get this signed. And those are those like the first like learning, oh, this is what you're going to need for this class, this is what you're going to be learning. So those two or three days would be, it's not even that bad.
You know, one of, some of the teachers, the last time we surveyed them, which was, I mean, a few years ago, that was actually one of the selling points for those. They felt they could use those two days, let's say it's two classes. That they felt that all the logistics, your class schedules, go down and get your schedule fixed, or you have a problem with this, or here's the thing, here's how I want to set up your, here's how I want you to set up your notes. All of that, they felt if they were to be able to get that done in two days, they could hit the ground running with the content teaching on the Tuesday after, rather than taking the first couple of days and not really getting rolling. So they actually felt that they'd get all the logistics out of the way before Labor Day and then really get going on Tuesday after Labor Day. So that's what I'm saying. There's so many pros and cons to this. It really depends on what you value and what your perspective is.
I can tell Mikel has some input.
Just speaking on a point that you brought up earlier, like the fact that starting earlier kind of pushes back all the stuff that students do before school that teachers don't really see. Like I know band camp is like a whole week that pushes back a week in the summer, which means that any family plans that you had, you'd have to delay because you have to be at band camp or pushes orchestra camp back a week. Also pushes tryouts back a week, which take a whole week, which means that families have to back a week earlier. And on top of that, there's a lot of camps that we do to prepare for stuff like this throughout the summer, which kind of pushes those back for all of us. So just like keeping perspective that it may also like push back everything that happens that we prepare before the school year starts back a lot for the students who are actually starting in earlier, but...
So I'm trying to figure out, and this is one of the dilemmas, is does it really do that? Because we've always had teachers come back the three days at the end of August. Say around the twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight. This year, it was twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, around that time. That's when they'd be doing it anyway. So I don't know if it's really, I don't know if it's really going to push all of the activities we're thinking about back even more, whether it's football, whether it's band camp, because that is historically the time when teachers have been returning for their PD days anyhow. So I don't think it's going to do that.
I'd like to know that, though. I mean, we could ask Mr. Massey, we could ask the athletic director and the coaches.
Because I just, just because we usually don't have like, because our coaches and our teachers, our teachers themselves who have to take these staff development days.
Right.
I don't know if we usually have things going on in those days.
They have to go to them.
Yeah, they have to go to them.
That's what I'm saying. They're on the professional development days anyway. So I actually, I'm not sure it actually is going to push back all of those, the early returns for the summer teams or... And I don't know if it really will.
I think that's, that would be important to know. But I think that we also have to look on the other end of it, too. You know, the kids are going to get out, the teachers and everybody's going to get out a little bit earlier in that June. And so, you know, that's going to start that next summer earlier. And one of the things that we always talk about is in the summertime, how, you know, a lot of times families do start their vacations earlier. They have a tradition. And, because I think we went through that one year when we were not, can't remember when it was. It was a couple of years ago, I think we were discussing that.
Yes.
And, you know, the heat and the kids getting distracted and, I mean, you know, there's always a million variables on each end, so...
And the point I think we ran into, if you look at the white one, the traditional one, a couple of years ago, let's say we have more than three snow days and it goes into that last week of June. Most summer camps, which are multi-state, start in June.
That's right.
So families have been challenged when we roll over into the next week because of the snow. Do I pull my child out of school for the last couple of days of school? Do I send them to the camp? Do I forfeit my deposit on summer camp? So it's very, it's very difficult to go to June twenty-ninth. And that's what the first calendar would, that means no one can sign their students up, their children up for anything at all until then, or shouldn't. And then they're going to face that dilemma. So I, that's why we're here, we're three different options.
I think it's great, Deb, that you have brought this forward because, again, just our discussion today, there's obviously many sides to this, depending upon what your perspective is. And I think since, and this is extremely helpful, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Janet.
As well. We don't need to decide tonight, obviously, so that's the good...
No, but we do need to decide in January. So January twenty-sixth is really when it has to be decided.
Mikel has one more thought.
I just, I completely agree with you, you said earlier also that, I know I always participate every single summer in the jazz camp, taking at the Ahearn, and that starts, and because of like scheduling, it's been starting like the week of finals. So I'll have finals in the morning and then three to eight go to the camp. And a lot of like the music kids participate and stuff like that. And a lot of camps start like that week after June, like volleyball or sports, or people who go away to like away camps. So I understand that part. I mean, it's been tough like having to study in the afternoon and then stay up late, studying some more after going to a camp. And the camp itself having to change the schedule several times because of like different school districts and all the different scheduling.
So there's nothing, there's nothing pretty about any of these options, I just want to say. But I will find out from athletics and music what would happen under all these scenarios.
So I'm just going to summarize the three scenarios.
Okay.
Ready for anybody at home who got interested in this topic? And tell me if I do it right. So scenario one is, we start on September eighth.
Students.
And the worst possible day, right, this is students. And the last possible day is the twenty-ninth of June.
Correct.
Scenario two is, we, students start on September second, and the last possible day is June twenty-eighth. I would strike that one as an option. There's not enough benefit to me to come back six days earlier to get out one day earlier, but that's just me. And then the third is, students start September first and would finish on June twenty-fourth.
Correct.
So to my way of thinking, it's the first or the third. Do you want it on the front end or do you want it on the back end? But to me, the second option doesn't get us enough benefit. But we would like the public's input, and I will thank the reporter in advance for their help. I know they'll put a story out on this. And we will continue the discussion.
So to follow up, would you like me to create a survey? Or would you, like if Frank writes a story about this dilemma, I really don't know how I feel about it. I'm here all year round, so people don't think I have an opinion on what's best for me. But would you like people who read this to call one of the school committee members and weigh in?
Yes.
I think jumping to a survey is premature and costly.
And I think that we need to use our media to elicit response or, and then from there, make a determination whether we need to get more, more of a response.
Let's save the money.
And by then, by the time we're discussing it on the twenty-sixth, I'll know from the, from the Foxville Education Associate Teachers what they recommend.
And I think that's going to weigh heavily, yeah.
Would you consider that an interrupt?
Okay. Everybody ready for budget updates? Do you guys want to stay?
We're interested in it.
I'm sorry, policy. So I'm still thinking budget. You're welcome to stay.
We're interested in it.
You are, right? Okay, second reading of policies.
I would like to make a motion that we suspend the entire reading of the policies.
Waive the readings?
I second that.
Any discussion?
I don't have any discussion. But I know they weren't here last time when the policies were fully read and discussed.
We also have two members of the committee who weren't here last time.
Oh, that's right, too.
So I didn't know if, under discussion, you would prefer to invite the students to ask whatever questions they have.
Yes.
I would love to hear their questions.
Ask if they have questions.
But I would love to waive the reading of these lengthy policies.
Do we have to vote on that?
Why don't we vote on waiving the reading, but then I'll allow some summary of each of the policies? Is that okay?
Oh, yes.
All right. So all in favor of waiving the reading? Okay, five no, five zero. So there are three here. The first is about student absences, right? Mrs. Bellinger, do you want to summarize what this was about?
Sure. Basically, these three policies are to make our school committee policy manual adhere to current law, changes that went into effect in Mass General laws in July, actually, that had to do with student absence policy and with student conduct and discipline. And I don't know, do the students have any questions, any specific questions?
Has, when would this take?
When would it take effect?
Yes.
Well, it actually already has taken effect because it is the law in the state of Massachusetts. This is, we're just catching up our policy manual to the current law in Massachusetts.
So it's already affected the school district already?
Yeah. So the minute it comes to Massachusetts law, we have to comply, and then it takes us a while sometimes to word it correctly. So you'll see in next year's handbook, there's an addendum to the handbook this year. But you'll see right in the printed handbook next year, because we print the handbooks in July, and it was just, that it will be right embedded in it. But you may have heard, oh, you may not, because it's probably not, you were your friends. But we have to contact families after five absences. And you have to do it in writing, and you have to give them a write-to-meeting. So it's a lot more procedure to make sure that families and parents are in the loop if a student has an absenteeism problem, that you can't just say, well, I sent an email and they're not... You have to really take much more concrete steps to get the family involved with the attendance problem for school. Because there's a lot of, there's a lot of data out there that the more you engage the families and the parents and the students in it and have a little bit more of accountability for that, that it helps with dropout. So we don't have a dropout problem at Foxville, but this is a statewide law.
Yeah, just to emphasize that. So the biggest change that we saw as we went through these policy readings, the first meeting, was there's really not a lot of substantive change. What there really is, is a lot more detail about what has to happen primarily on the part of the school department when they want to follow up on something. So it mandates that the principal has to do this, or someone has to do this, and in this number of days. So as Mrs. Spinelli said, they really want to make sure that we are reaching out and contacting the families.
So that students don't fall through the cracks.
Exactly.
So now if there was like a medical, a medical issue and it was within like the two days, would you guys have to contact up even if there was like a, like a notice to the school?
Well, not really, because it does state which absences are, you know, which are known excused absences. So it sort of spells out a little bit more clearly which types of reasons we totally get why students... But it's the student who's absent here and there, and it adds up, and we don't know why, and it doesn't appear to be illness. They just sort of irregularly come to school. That's really what this puts more procedures in place so that that doesn't, so that comes to people's attention and so that they can intervene with the student and the family.
So that's the first one, right? Tina, on student absences.
That is it. Yeah, that is it.
Does anyone have any questions about that one? Shall we take them one at a time?
Yes, I think we should.
Is there a motion to adopt?
I'll make a motion to accept the student absence policy as, as presented. Steve's second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor? Five zero, Janet, thank you. So the next one is exclusions and exemptions from school attendance.
Yes, the only thing that changed in this, um, this policy from what we had in our policy manual is the one sentence that has been struck, um, that's in red. Uh, because you can no longer exclude a, a child from, from school, um, because they've been expelled from another district. There's an obligation on the part of the district to educate that child, um, as we discussed last.
So to give us the only change. In the, before July, any public school, say a high school, did not have to accept a student that's been expelled from another school for a bad reason. So if a student was expelled from a community thirty minutes away from here and that's where they actually live and then they're looking around to where they can enroll their child in high school, we wouldn't have to take anyone that's been expelled. We could decide if we wanted to, or we could say, no. Um, that has now changed. So if a student is expelled from Foxborough High School, we have to continue to educate that child in some other way, environment. And conversely, we, you cannot deny a student expelled somewhere else from an education either. That's a huge change.
So someone lives in another town and is expelled and moved in, moves into Foxborough, we are obligated to.
To educate that child.
Educate that, that is correct.
Okay, yeah. And so it, this could go either way. Either that happens more often, or there's no reason to move from the town you're in if your child's been expelled from there. Because that district has to educate your child in some other way.
Right.
So there won't be as much shopping around for another school to enroll in. But there's also no leeway at all to deny entrance or to educate. So it could end up being costly, depends on how, it's probably less costly for a small suburb like us. But it has some potential, potential financial and, uh, real impact. Because there are gonna be students that we don't want in our general populations, but we still gonna have obligation to educate them. So the whole goal is the same thing, it's education.
Right.
But, and, and an opportunity for every child. But, um, logistically, it could be on a scale of one to ten, it could be challenging at a one to two level or it could end up being challenging around eight or nine, we're not sure yet.
But it's the law.
It is the law.
Right.
So that's what that.
It did seem, and I don't, it's always dangerous to generalize, I guess. But it did seem when we talked about these at the first meeting, like these policies are written to address perhaps some of the larger school systems that have more complexities and more challenges than we have traditionally experienced.
Correct.
I hear you, yeah.
And that's typical of the law. It's sort of a broad law that, um, advocates for the rights of children in our Commonwealth.
As it should.
As it should.
Okay, yes, Steve.
Uh. Does it say how long? Let's say we have an extreme case. And with all best intentions in following the letter of the law, we, we really don't think it's a good idea or just flat out don't want this student in our school district. Where is it that says how long we have to take to yes or no and admitted, uh, a candidate's application?
You mean what period of time do we have?
Yeah.
Well, it's not really an application because that child now has a right to an education. We just have to figure out how we're gonna provide that.
But there might be special circumstances.
Doesn't have to be in house.
We, I, I see, okay.
Are you asking what the age of obligation is?
No, I'm saying that, I'm saying that if, you know, somebody's trying to offload a problem that they should be dealing with from another community, because we have to comply with the law, that we have some kind of administrative flexibility to make sure we're prepared to handle such a student.
Well, essentially.
With whatever monies or services or talent is required.
Essentially what happens is each district has to put forward a plan as to how, what, what are the options in Foxborough? Which are gonna be different from the options in Boston or Worcester or in.
Right, Exville, right.
My own town of Hudson. It's, they're all gonna be different. We have to basically put forward a menu of which options we can provide. And then each situation is unique and we're gonna pick the best option.
I think that's key, right? That each situation is going to be unique. Because when a child is expelled, obviously, that's particular situation is gonna present with unique circumstances as to how they got to that point.
Exactly.
And so therefore, whatever the plan is, is gonna be geared specifically to that individual to help them gain more education.
Yes.
So it's hard to make any kind of.
It is, because you have to keep the best interest of that child in mind and the best interest of our students, our general population in mind. So we haven't been challenged by it yet, but we'll see.
And the law itself doesn't put any particular timeframe on it, I'm looking at it. But it does say, any school district that suspends or expels a student under the section cal, shall contin, shall continue to provide educational services to the student during the period of suspension or expulsion under section twenty one of chapter seventy six. If the student moves to another district during the period of suspension or expulsion, the new district of residence shall either admit the student to its schools or provide educational services to the student in an education service plan under section twenty one of chapter seventy six. So, no timeframe, but you have to do it.
Yeah, so for a community like our, I don't, so it's a return. But in a community like ours, it's, it's more likely, we shouldn't worry about kids coming here elsewhere, cause they don't have to anymore. We should worry about anybody that is, is expelled from here. What are we gonna do for that child?
And that's what's addressed in the other section.
No, I was just, I was just curious, um, in a case where if someone were expelled from our school, like what were the other forms of education offered? That's.
It could be online. Uh, we, we don't know what our options are going to be. I'm just gonna tell you what's possible out there. You could take courses virtually toward your high school diploma. Um, we could find another placement that educates children with some challenges, whatever that may be. I don't even know what that would be.
Out of school, out of district placement.
Yeah, we, we might have to think about, I don't think we're big enough, but some districts I think are thinking about educating after school hours. So there, there would be basically school from say Ford or whatever. And that, but that's a huge cost to do that, and I don't think we're big enough, we're never do that. There are some places that offer evening, um, degree programs, academies, is one in, Stowe, is one in Mansfield, I think. But some of those things we'd have to fund. So if we're not gonna educate them here, then we'd have to fund them, which is the potential impact. I don't really know what options we're gonna provide. We haven't, we haven't gotten that together yet. We also don't have anybody waiting for that option. But, um, we, we're gonna have to put that plan together so that we know what we're capable of doing and what, what options we would offer.
Do you want a motion?
Yes, please.
To accept this exclusions and exemptions from school attendance policy as presented.
Second.
Second, any further discussion? All in favor? Five zero, thank you. Last one, student conduct and discipline. This is the one where we really gave Ms. Lord and Mrs. Bellinger a little break by waiving the second reading.
Thank you.
Although I'll tell you, they did an outstanding job.
Took a while though.
And actually, what we're doing, because this is law now, the one that we used to have is completely out. So the one we are replacing it with has all the current law.
That's probably a good way Katie and Steve to compare it, if you didn't already, would be, take a look at the one that's in red. That for the audience was a one-page fairly high-level set of reasons for possible expulsion or suspension.
Yeah, it was basically a list of what not to do in school.
Right.
Um, and now the new policy of six pages not only explains, well, it doesn't, it doesn't bother explaining what not to do because that's sort of a negative approach. What, what, the, cause their student handbook explains reasons why you could be suspended or expelled. So it just refers to the handbook, cause that could change, you know, year to year with something new. You don't wanna have a, a list like that that seems to be the be all and end all list when we know there's, there could be more reasons. So what the new, um, legal policy that's being recommended really does in six pages is it really outlines every step of the process that must be followed to defend the rights of the students who, um, you know, are under suspension or who are receiving notice of suspension or those who have received notice of possible expulsion or have been expelled.
One way to think about this from a committee standpoint is, you know, it really puts a burden on our superintendent and our building administrators to follow a pretty detailed procedure now. Um, which in theory, we could find ourselves defending, you know, at some point if someone didn't keep it. So I, I, what I don't like about it is the burden. Uh, but clearly it's there for clarity and thoroughness. I don't know, am I summarizing it right?
Yes, you are. And I, I mean, I think the story between the former policy and the new policy, if you look at the legal references at the bottom of the old one, it's simply Mass General Law, uh, chapter seventy one, section thirty seven H. And now we have section thirty seven H, section thirty seven H and a half, section thirty seven H and three quarters, Mass General Law, chapter seventy six, section twenty one, and an entire, um, section of the Code of Massachusetts regulations that have been promulgated to put into effect these changes to the law. So it is exhaustive, it is in the interests of protecting due process rights of our students. And it is set out, um, in painstaking detail in our new policy.
We'll make a motion to accept student.
I'd like, just so there's no question, uh, Katie, we used to have in-school suspension here, but we don't have any in-school suspension. So in the red, we're, we're taking this out. Anything that mentions in-school suspension, because Foxborough doesn't have it. So those will, that verbiage will be dropped.
So we have a motion to accept, any further discussion?
I'll second it.
We have a second, okay, thanks, Bevy. All those in favor? Five zero.
Great.
Tina and Bevy, thank you very much for the work on that.
My pleasure. Just many thanks.
Tina is a delight. To have as a work partner.
Okay, we are on to acceptance of donation.
I like it.
Yes, so I'm gonna turn this over to Bill. This is the donation. We had some wonderful guests at the last meeting talking about the dugouts in the back baseball complex, baseball softball complex. So Bill had followed up with them and I'm gonna turn it over to him to tell you where we are with that.
Yeah, I, I, I'm actually back and forth with Dave Feldman today and, and, uh, the final issues are, there was two, two concerns that I ended up with. First one being, um, obviously with a enclosed structure, the potential for graffiti and other issues. And obviously having to be able to keep that appropriately clear of graffiti. What they have committed to do is basically to maintain that. If there are issues, uh, they will repaint it on a regular basis and take care of it that way. So I, I, I feel a little bit more comfortable about that because quite honestly, that's, you know, we have it all the time and hopefully it won't. But, um, we can't leave it out there either with it on it. The second thing is that under Title IX, we have to, whatever we do for the baseball, we have to do for the softball. And, uh, they have, um, committed to doing the dugouts for both fields. So it, it is something that, uh, you know, would be at least comparable for both the girls and boys' sports. And, uh, you know, I, I think it's well worth the, you know, I get their point. In the early spring, it's cold out there, it's, it's cool wind going through and stuff. So having the enclosure gives a little bit more protection, um, to the kids as they're playing. So, um, I think it's worth a shot. It, it should last, you know, a number of years at, at, at a minimum. And, and if we run into issues, we'll have to figure out a way to, to resolve them. But it's a very generous donation and it's, you know, a lot of their efforts labor-wise, but it's also a lot of material that they're putting into it.
So they're going to do dugouts at the baseball and the softball?
Correct.
And this is the Booster Club officially, right? The baseball boosters, which was very nice. They came forward and said, hey, we'd like to do another piece to help finish it up. And I actually like that we delayed just a little bit because it came to us, uh, under visitors last time. And, um, I wanted to be sure Bill and Tony and Diana and everyone else were, were comfortable. So it sounds like you are comfortable, Bill?
Yeah, no, I, I think they're, they're committing to, to really support this as they go along. I mean, they, you know, they take the, the baseball fields very seriously. They use them obviously much more than the, just what we do for the, uh, our sports, um, program that obviously the American Legion, Legion plays there. They have, uh, a number of other, uh, levels. There was five levels I've met with when we had this whole conversation about moving the field. So, uh, it's a fairly extensive group in town that, that believes in the baseball program. As you saw, they donated the sign to, to, you know, put on the back of the, uh, scoreboard out there that really is very nice. It's the home of the Warriors. It's well done and, and, and painted out and, uh, really does give a, a nice name tag to the area. So, you know, they're supporting the program. I think if, if they're willing to support this and, and help us maintain it, then, you know, let's move forward.
And you know, actually by having it placed on the agenda, we can track it. You know, it makes it, it, it makes the transparency much better rather than accepting a gift. I don't think we've ever accepted a gift over the desk, kind of.
I don't, I don't think we knew till today it was gonna be softball. I think the initial was just the baseball field.
No, well, it had, it had two dugouts.
As we said last time, we're not sure what are the questions we have, so let's just give us pause to think about it. So that was, that's, that's a great, um.
But by placing it on the agenda, we can track it and it make, means it's well vetted.
So it's a gift and long-term maintenance is.
Included.
Not our burden.
Correct.
Except for some minor.
Yeah, I mean, we, we would take care of it like we take care of anything, but obviously if it's a major issue, they're, they're gonna be there. And they're gonna be there more often than we are in a general sense. They're there all summer and, and with the different program, so.
Can we get a phone like Terry Francona calls a bullpen on, you know, just symbolically?
Let's not, let's not push for too much.
They're cool.
Do you want a motion to accept this donation?
I think that'd be great.
Motion to accept.
Second.
The donation and long-term care of the baseball and softball.
And then long-term.
Second with much gratitude.
Second with much gratitude, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Play ball.
Bevy, you in favor?
Oh, I'm sorry, I, yes, I'm writing down long-term care, I like that, sorry.
Thank you, thank you. Five zero, thank you very much to the baseball boosters and, uh, Dave Feldman for his leadership in bringing this forward.
Many thanks. It's gonna be great. What a complex that's gonna be back there.
Well, I'm glad, I'm glad you said that, Debbie. I meant to say the same thing. I mean, if you, you know, before it was just grass and weeds and clearing and Bill running around trying to keep people off. I mean, as you drive back there, it, it's gonna be really nice. I mean, the addition out front with the turf and out back with the baseball and softball complex, it's gonna be.
So on a related note, I saw the, the wonderful Declan Newley's, uh, thank you letter in last week's reporter, thanking everybody who helped him with his, with the ecology. He's built back there, the bird cages, the, um, the blueberry bushes and all of that. He's done a great job, that kid. So I, I saw his letter, which was thanking everyone else, but I just wanna go back to the beginning and thank him because that's been terrific. So good for you, Declan.
Yeah, he's a great kid.
Yeah.
And it's a good project.
Other matters, Mrs. Spinelli.
Oh, I have a sad other matter, um, which is the Borough School, MSBA. Today, we found out that we are not being invited into the School Building Authority Round for this coming year. So the letter says, Massachusetts School Building Authority would like to thank the town of Foxborough, the district for expressing interest in MSBA's program for school building, construction, renovation, or repair grants through the fiscal year two thousand fourteen Statement of Interest Process. Overall, MSBA received one hundred eight statements of interest from seventy-two different school districts for consideration in the fiscal year two thousand fourteen. In reviewing those statements of interest, MSBA, oh, here, I've got lots of happy copies for all of you. Let me just send them your way. The MSBA identifies the school facilities that have the greatest and most urgent need based on an assessment of the entire cohort of statements of interest that are received for the consideration of this fiscal year. Through the MSBA's due diligence process and review of the hundred and eight statements that were received, the MSBA has determined that the Mabel M. Borough Statement, M. Borough Statement of Interest will not be invited into the eligibility period at this time. So, um, I would say I'm, I'm surprised in that I was very hopeful to get in in this second submission that we've had. But I guess I'm not surprised because we do maintain our buildings really well. So it would be hard to imagine that when they looked at urgent needs, even though it is urgent for us, our standards, it's very, it's quite urgent. But I guess in terms of how school buildings have been maintained across the state, it, they don't feel it's that urgent. So, um, as our town manager said to me today in email, I guess it's congratulations on maintaining our buildings so well. But because of that, we're not really in the cohort. So I think we've gotta do, this just happened this afternoon, so I think we've gotta do some thinking. some thinking about what our next step would be, about resubmission or repair, and so that's going to take us a bit. So we'll come back probably at the end of January with some thoughts on that, it certainly won't be for January fifth, and we, it's going to take a lot of conversation about how we're going to, what we should do next, because we know we have serious roof and heating system needs and a-
Is there an appeal process for that?
No, no, but it does, it does look like they're pointing us to the next window.
No, they always do.
They always do that. They, I mean, the reason we were somewhat hopeful is they had-
Nice to see you again.
It narrowed the list down, and we actually met with them as one of the prospective to be invited in this time. So we thought at least we'd made it to that part of the list, so we had a little bit of a ray of hope in there. My biggest concern, to Deb's point, and, and this is why we've always, you know, we've been pursuing the Statement of Interest with them, is that if it was as simple as replacing the roof, or as simple as replacing a boilers, then, you know, we would just go forward with that. And actually, they have a separate program that does those. My real concern is, once I start that process, I open up such a can of worms, that, you know, we'll just never get the funding we need to fix everything that's going to go wrong in that process. It's, it's, as Deb said, it's, it's the age of the building, it, you can maintain the floors and the, and the walls as much as you possibly want, but when the roof is finally gone, it's gone, and when the boiler system is gone, all the unit vents and all the classrooms are gone, everything is, is connected. So, and we tried to make that point very clearly to them, yes, we could do some of these smaller projects, but then what happens when you finally go to do the rest of it? What are you going to do with the components that you've already fixed? I can't, I can't put a new roof on, then tomorrow start ripping holes in it to fix, you know, to put new apparatus through and, and still have my warranties. It's like you, you avoid a lot of issues, so I think this is a little disheartening in the way that they've approached this, but I got to be honest with you, with the MSBA, it's, it's all or nothing. That's the way they react.
Nothing surprising.
No. Their process is very different. The old process would more acknowledge towns that kept up the maintenance of their buildings because we were responsible.
Right.
And, and the opposite is, is really true now, so.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So, how deep is the well? I mean, i- is it because there's other people in front of us, or because this is a judgment? Because it sounds to me-
No, it's other people.
-like they're rewarding bad behavior, or, no, I agree, there's a certain number of buildings that probably have fallen in disrepair due to circumstances of, out of the control of, of a responsible, you know, school committee or township. But if, if they're, you know, we do a good job taking care of our stuff, and it just doesn't seem completely reasonable to me. Do we have to call, like, our reps, like Barrows and Timmeltie and that sort of thing, and see what's going on with those guys?
Well, I can only tell you that Lakeview submitted five times, and the only time they finally got approved on the sixth time was when it was in the Boston Globe.
Well, that's, I mean, is there any sweetheart stuff going on here?
It took them six times. Oh.
So it, it, it really, it, it's very hard to say, and, and you can imagine, as you said, some of the bigger school districts that are in, in the, you know, more impoverished areas, as far as what, you know, if they're going to make cuts, they're going to make cuts to maintenance before they're going to try to cut a teacher or something of that. So I think to Deb's point, under the old process, you actually got points for how well you maintained your building, and when it was finally time to be redone, it was time to be redone. But you got points because you did a great job getting it that long out, you know, that far out. That does not, you know, Jack tried to make the, the concept that it was, Jack McCarthy, that, that that still existed, but it doesn't. It's clearly not in the new rules. So, you know, what it really is, you know, to our, to our chagrin, yes, the building, we keep it the way it needs to be kept for the, for the kids' safety and the kids', you know, issues within the building, but it's still, there's just a lot of things that are beyond their age. And, you know, you can only put Band-Aids on it for so long before you really are going to have a problem. And that, that's what scares me the most. I mean, even another year in the process means you're really talking another two years in the process, because of the planning stages and the process going through the end. The MSBA's process, just getting invited in only would have given us the guarantee that we could go to the next step and let them pursue looking at the process with us.
Right.
And that would have been another year in the process. And then, if they still took us outside of that process, we could finally get into a stage of actually doing construction, which would be a year out from there. So the concern is the delays here are just going to push us further and further, and unfortunately, as Deb said, we're going to-
And our understanding, though, is that they, they're only going to fund about twenty projects out of that hundred and eight, roughly.
Oh, okay, so we do know how deep the well is?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yes.
So, but we, because I, I think, I want to compliment, but we had, we had an excellent proposal, detailed, reasonable, really well done, and I, I'm sure, and I think they mentioned really, even compared to the average one, they got very, very well done. I just don't know why, that shouldn't have gotten its own, and they did come for a visit. So the fact that they came for a visit and toured the school, we, we knew we were under some serious consideration, it's just that, you know, we, evidently, we're going to have to wait for it to fall and complete disrepair, like you see in other towns, and have things be horrible and in the paper, but I don't, I'm, I'm just really disappointed, so that was upsetting news today, because I think it does reward the wrong thing, and I really don't know how much more money we can put into Borough School on our own. I mean, that we're kind of past the Band-Aid stage, so it's disappointing. I will call Jay Barrows, though, but I don't think he'll go far, because I don't know how, they can't really-
It's autonomous.
I just don't know how political this, this process is, and if it's political, it's political.
I think they, I don't, I don't know. I don't know. Do you know?
Well, based on the process we went through with the high school, I would say it's, it's a pretty much an autonomous group under the state treasurer. We did have Jay and, and a few other reps actually intercede, actually one of the, the head of the superintendents interceded, and, and that at least got us some conversations during the high school project when we were having some problems, but it was, there was a lot of effort just to even get to that. So they, they have a path, they have a program, and they kind of dictate and control it themselves.
So we should get another submission in by the April tenth deadline, but we should also start thinking about, uh-
Ready to go.
Yeah, it's ready to go. April tenth deadline for the next one.
Yes, I think we have to think about, this is our, this is our second time.
Yeah.
So this was our second submission. So on, on a happy note, though, there were two wonderful concerts last week. The Wednesday concert, which I wasn't able to attend, the jazz concert, had the visiting Australian students and their instructors, which was a rousing good time. That would have been the night we're fishing off the budget. And then Thursday night's concert band, I, I think that was one of the best concerts ever.
Ah, yeah.
And that was just wonderful, and my husband, who is very much a music aficionado, said that he felt this is one of the best concert bands he's heard over the number of years we've been attending. He said, to quote my husband, "Rich, full, and brassy, just the way he likes it." So it was really, really an outstanding, and they, they did some retrospective pieces. It was, is wonderful, so.
It was awesome.
The orchestra and the choir were also really wonderful, too.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
I love the Nutcracker Suite, that always puts me in the holiday spirit.
The string orchestra probably did the most challenging series, that, very challenging pieces, so, and the choir was, as usual.
And the whole specie did, that they did was great, too.
It was all good.
Yeah.
It was, everything was wonderful. They're really challenging themselves, even to our level, a little bit beyond. And happy holidays, everyone, that's all I have.
Happy holidays!
Yes, that's great.
Bevy?
That's, well, it's going to be my happy holidays, too.
Tina?
I'm good.
Amy? Steve? Katie? Bill? Motion to adjourn?
Make that motion.
I'll second.
First, second? All in favor? Good night, everybody.
Good night.